Recording in progress. And I'll read the Board of, uh, Code of Conduct, which a board recognizes the importance of public comment as a discussion of the Chair on items on the agenda. Uh, once recognized, all persons addressing the board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. And it's the role of the Chair to maintain order in public comment or discussion. Any members participating remotely? I don't think so. Okay, with that, uh, do we have public comment? Public comment, dang, what? Ray?
I, I know, well, but the, these are comments are public comments. So, um, there is an election in Reading on May thirteenth. For the Kilham School and the Recal Building, uh, both off of Havel Street. Um, so if you're a Reading resident, there's probably many here and, and certainly some in the audience might be, um, both for those projects. Well, you know, whether you vote ye or nay, whatever, go vote. Um, the implication for Reading, why I bring it up here is that of course we have opportunities to do solar power there. Either on the building through the projects or in the parking lot. So we will, if depending whether those go up or down, um, that will be an opportunity for, for our MLD. Um, second is, uh, May ninth and tenth is the bike recycling event. And, um, working with, uh, uh, Melanie there on, uh, that project. Um, if you're not familiar with it, uh, whole bunch of bikes get dropped off, a whole bunch of people kind of clean them up and we pass them on to the people who need them. Uh, there's no, no money involved, just a lot of, um, spray oil and paint and screwdrivers and things. Um, it's gonna have some tears. Not everyone gets the bike that they really, really want. There's a few of those, yeah. Um, and then any excess bikes go to Bike Not Bombs, uh, another place where bikes get reused. Um, but, um, we're working through the paperwork with our MLD for that and then, um, uh, working with Reading Cares and the Reading Climate Committee to make that happen. So, um, those two events, um, in the public comment section.
Relative to the pub, great. Thank you very much, Ray. Any other comments? Think so. Um, great. Well, we have two new members. Um, we have it starting with our new cab member. So Vivek, you want to take it away?
Yeah, so welcome. We have a new cab member, Charles Portopapas from Wilmington. Any comments you want to make?
Um, no, I'm just, uh, you know, obviously this came about.
Do you want me to briefly introduce you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Charlie Portopapas. Uh, I live on sixteen King Street in Wilmington. Uh, I've been a, well, I grew up in Wilmington. Um, I've also been a lineman for over twenty years. So I'm familiar with the business, uh, well, I should say the, um, construction, you know, the business is a whole different, uh, animal. But, um,
Full training.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm, I'm in my new position as a, uh, a transmission planner, job planner. I'm kind of getting to see what that is. I'm no longer in the tools. I'm in the planning phase of, uh, for, um, being a consultant for National Grid. So, um, starting to see how the sausage is made and instead of just churn of the bolts. So it's, uh, it's been interesting.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Great to have you here. Do you go by Charles or?
Chow.
Charles.
Okay, Chow. Chow. There you go. There you go.
Thank you. And we have a new member of the Board of Commissioners, Adam Richard Swanson. I think you go by Rich, right? And, uh, Rich, please, uh, introduce yourself and, uh, so, yeah.
Yeah, so my name is Rich Swanson. I'm very happy to be here. Uh, well, I'm newly elected, so newly minted. I went in and, and was sworn in at the town clerk last week. Uh, so I live here in Reading. I've, I've been a Reading resident for about twenty years. Uh, moved from Colorado. Um, I, I'm a little bit familiar with sort of utility work. I've, I've worked as a consultant in, in that space, uh, for a while on sort of supply side due diligence and uh, also with some regulatory training in different parts of the world through a State Department program that we did, um, on, uh, cost of service tariffs and, and kind of training commissioners and, and, uh, boards on, uh, that methodology and so forth. Um, so anyway, yeah, very excited to be here and, uh, look forward to diving in.
Welcome, Rich. Welcome. Um, okay. With that, we move to the, uh, everybody's favorite time of year. Uh, when we pass the torch after the election. Um, so our, as, as per usual, we have a discussion and then nominations and ele- elect a, a new Chair and Vice Chair of the Board. Um, so we're gonna discuss this point.
Um, there's a cab.
Oh, do you, I think we're up, no, oh, he, he's, I think Vivek stays for two years, so he's not gonna. Just you'll see for this meeting.
Okay, no discussion. Like to make a nomination.
Okay, so.
Uh, like to nominate Pam Daskalaskis for, uh, Chair.
Second.
Okay, uh, we have a, we have a, a nomination, a second. Any, any discussion to, uh? Ray, Ray saying, yep. Okay, well, then I guess we're ready for a vote.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, uh, would be happy to take on that responsibility if, if the board decides that's the right move. So I would appreciate your trust.
Well then, I guess, uh, you have the discussion or are we ready for a vote?
Did you have a comment?
No, I'm raising my hand.
Oh, I think. First we say all in, all in favor, okay?
I'm fine.
Yeah, yes, you can vote for yourself, for yourself. All votes and, uh, motion carries five oh. There you go. You run the meeting from here and you want, you can even switch spots if you'd like to.
I, I'm fine where I am, thank you. Um, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate everybody's trust, like I said, um. I'm sure there will be some patience required as I learn a little bit more about the role, but, um, excited to continue to serve. So thank you for that.
Appreciate.
Um, and I, so I guess, uh, the next one would be, uh, to nominate, uh, Vice Chair.
It's true. So, uh, need discussion or, um, who would like to take that role or?
Do a nomination?
You want to do a nomination, Pam?
Yep, um, I'll nominate Bob Coulter, Vice Chair.
Um, all right, is anybody, any discussion on that?
A second. Do you got a second on it?
Sure, okay. So then, any discussion on the motion in the second? Oh, sorry, Jesus. I stepped out of line there. Yeah.
That's fine. Um, any discussion?
Does he want to do it? Just check me.
Yeah, okay, any, any other discussion? Okay, ready for the vote? All those in favor?
Okay.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
There we go.
Um, and then it looks like we have, uh, appointments of the Reading, Town of Reading Audit Committee and Sub Audit, Audit Committee members. Um, does anyone who's part of the Audit Committee, I think that was Phil, right? So.
So, yeah.
Um.
I'd be happy to do it, I guess. Um, I don't, I think Phil did it for like thirty years or something, right? He did it, was he the guy who?
Or it was his career. He was.
What it, can somebody explain like, in what, since he always did it, like what, what's involved and what's the commitment?
Um, I think I was assistant on that committee and I didn't do anything. So it's a, it sounds like a sweet job.
All right. Does that mean you would like to be the? The nominee or, uh, is I?
I will certainly serve on it. If, if, if your seniority wants to take the first chair and I'll take the second chair, that's fine.
I mean, I guess, I guess I would, yeah, I mean, yeah, sure. I would, I'd be happy to do it if, if it's not an excessive meeting commitment.
So that's what I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm not. So one of the positions is the representative for us on the Town Audit Committee. So then that has their own meetings. I'm not sure how many times they meet. And then the other is, um, that subcommittee that just meets when we review the audit in June.
That's one.
Which would only be one time.
Can I just ask one other clarifying question? Phil was also Secretary and do we also need to nominate and replace the Secretary?
So I just want to check nineteen, but I'm pretty sure what you guys decided was that every meeting you would rotate the Secretary.
Unless you want to.
Have it up.
Well, Phil just.
Yeah.
Yeah, technically you would have to assign one for each meeting.
Okay.
Phil just, he was doing it, but he's, he's decades. Well, he, no, for decades, but he did do it.
So when you say you guys, you mean some, somebody many years ago decided that that is what it would happen or did we recently decide we were going to rotate it?
Probably had talked about it. I'm not saying it.
Yeah.
So it's really up to you guys, what, you at the board, whatever you'd like to do.
Okay.
Well, I'm happy to be the new casino on the board. I'd be happy to do that job. But if you want to go do the audit thing first.
Are you interested in moving up in the role or would you like to remain as?
Do we, do we?
Well, I'm.
Uh, is the top, Sub Audit Committee or we talk to Secretary?
Let's, let's.
Let's talk, let's talk about the Audit Committee first. I, I guess I'm asking if you're comfortable staying in your backup role or if you're interested in taking a more prominent role in that.
I, I would be happy to serve either role if you want to take the first chair. I'll take the second chair and.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, is the first one to serve on the town, only the Town of Reading's books? And the second one is just to? One time meeting. Okay, yeah. So. Basically just on the Town of Reading. Okay, so why don't you take, since you did, you were, why don't you take the point on the town one?
Okay.
All right, and I'll, I can do the second one.
Okay.
Um, meaning we could do the one, the one meeting for the RMLD Board. The second one.
Okay.
And I could be the backup.
All right, so let's read it to, want to serve as new RMLD Board of Commissioners member.
So that's you.
Somebody is the back. So.
Member to the town. So Ray is in the first space and.
And I could do it.
And Dave, so it goes Ray and Dave and Dave and Ray. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
Yeah, you got it, right.
All right.
So it looks like we don't have to nominate. We just have to read a motion. So, um, does anybody want to read the motion?
I'll, I'll do it. Move, although I'm a recipient of a vote.
Maybe.
All right.
Um, move to appoint Ray to serve as the new RMLD Board of Commissioners and Dave to serve as the backup RMLD Board of Commissioners member on the Town of Reading Audit Committee. Be effective after the vote is taken.
Second.
Second.
Second, I'll second. I'm getting involved.
We're gonna put you in charge of reading motions. Okay, all in favor?
To an appointment, yeah.
On paper. Five.
Okay. Um, but motion carries five oh. The next one, uh, does anybody, would you like to read?
Read it, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I'll read it.
Yes.
Uh, move to appoint Dave and Ray as the new RMLD Board of Commissioners, Sub Audit Committee members to be effective after the vote is taken.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, on favor? No, okay, motion carries five zero. Excellent. And from a board of, from a secretary standing.
I can read you those sections. So it says what you have right now, a secretary shall be appointed by the Chair from time to time as expedient and convenient for the board.
So that's just, it doesn't.
So we.
We need an action. Set a point. The point.
Okay, all right. So I guess.
I'd be, I'd be happy to do it and do the, be the new Phil if you're willing, if that's. And Rick, you might want to work with Rich as well. It's gonna be a great chance for him to learn. Exactly. I'd be happy to do that. That's great.
Okay. So do we need to motion on that? Okay, great. You are nominated. So.
Thank you.
So appointed. Okay, uh, so moving along, approval of meeting minutes, um, Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for December seventeenth, twenty twenty four and December twentieth, twenty twenty four. Um, Rich, would you like to read the motion and then we'll discuss if needed?
Yeah, uh, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four and December twentieth, twenty four, uh, twenty twenty four open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager. Second.
Uh, any discussion?
I think we also just have a motion so that, you know, discuss at the same time.
Okay. Go for it.
Move that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board approves December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board Secretary.
Second. Any discussion from the, your cab? Uh, for Board of Commissioners, all those in favor?
I think you do cab first, right? What, do they recommend or does it matter?
Oh, it's listed, B O C that.
Oh, yeah, this case, because it was a joint meeting, so orders independent.
Okay. So B O C, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero.
Game motion. All right, four oh.
Okay, great. Marketing update.
Hi, everyone. Welcome, members. Um, we wanted to have a quick revisit to the logo, um, and identity, um, review that we presented last meeting, just to be able to share with you guys a little bit more of where we had explored in the color realm. Um, I think we were all happy with the icon and the treatment in general, the impact of it, but more just, um, there was a request from the board and to see a little bit more. So I'm going to walk through that and open it up for questions. So I just want to kind of remind you and especially for the new members, um, the, some of the rationale, we want, sorry. We wanted to make sure that its brand was very distinctive and ownable. We want to make sure that it's clear, uh, modern, bold, innovative, all of the qualities that we really cherish in RMLD. Um, we want to make sure that it's crisp and effective and represents the future. So it was all things that we looked at in the push through this new identity. Um, all of you have seen this, um, we looked for, um, a nice, clean, crisp and scalable icon, mark and type treatment. Pushing forward with RMLD as the main, but we have some supporting, um, in the backend and all of the slides from the original deck are in the appendix for today, just in case the new members need to refer to it. Um, one of the questions was around color in particular. We really wanted to pick a color palette that was flexible, that was, had lots of visual impact and that really resonated both in electronic and print forms. Um, had really nice contrast, really nice accessibility, all of those pieces. And then specifically, we wanted to make sure that it stood out. We looked at all of, I don't know if it's all, but we looked at many MLPs, we looked at many IOUs, we looked at the colors that were prominent and we wanted to make sure that, you know, we were leveling to the top, rising to the top in that. And we proved that through this slide early on. We did explore other color sets. And we'll show some of them now. We looked from, you know, more reserved color sets and you can kind of see as color, you know, screen to screen does vary a little bit. Um, but we looked at different tones of the blues, different tones of a highlight color, some greens. Um, we looked at some more vibrant colors to see and then, and played with those throughout. And that's what really had us land on what we feel still is the strongest of those color sets. So I wanted to give the board a chance to, you know, now that you've had a little bit of time to sit with it, to sit with the icons and that other more questions or any, you know, concerns that we can address.
Bob?
No, go ahead, yeah.
Um, there were just two things that I had. One is, I know the, the board last time gave some feedback around the light bulb itself being an incandescent, um, light bulb kind of noticeable about that. So I wasn't sure if that was something that you had gone back and looked at potentially tweaking that a little bit to make it more of a um, modern technology.
Sure. So we had looked at the balance between the light bulb representing our history and our future. So that was part of the consideration. We also did some initial early sketches where we did more of that, um, kind of the line of the, the two toned, um, current light bulbs. We actually took photos of current light bulbs as we were sketching. So the shape and the threads on the bottom represent the current light bulb shape that is on the market from Amazon to Walmart to wherever. Um, the only thing that is missing is that two-tone, which is a tech, is a kind of an aesthetic feature that could disappear in the next two to three years. It could go back to a full glass. It could go back to, you know, there's, there's always going to be lots of variation involved. And we wanted it to kind of be more of the, just that icon feel.
Uh, the second question is just, I think this was also raised last time is what do we estimate the cost of the transition to be? And I know you had talked about it being a kind of a softer transition or slower, you know, rolling transition, but there's probably some level of cost involved here. So what do you think the, what's the budget or what is the expectation for what you're going to have to spend to do a changeover?
I can talk a little bit about this stuff in progress as far as the website that is already contracted and, and paid for. We're just waiting on the new identity to be able to move forward with that. Um, we're actually recouping hopefully some of that cost with the, being able to do some of this design work in-house versus using that agency. Um, as far as any of our digital properties, that's really the time and effort of the team here to update. Um, as far as anything that's print or tangible, we'll take a very proactive, you know, and careful approach towards that. For, and we're not going to just kind of toss things out for the, the, um, for the sake of updating the brand. We're going to make sure we're thoughtful and planning ahead. And as new vehicles get introduced, they get rebranded as new signage is needed as it gets rebranded. There will be that interim time to be able to be careful of costs.
So we're not going to be immediately changing the logos on trucks, changing the sign out front of the building.
Yeah, we, so we, over the, um, so we have money budgeted. We're talking the range of ten to twenty thousand dollars all in. Um, but as Melissa mentioned, most of these are going to be when we're actually reprinting stuff or redoing, we, we would normally order stuff anyways. The only place that it really would come in is, you mentioned, the sign out front, which does need to be updated. So it's faded. So the time we've kind of helped, we were going to try and do that two years ago. But we wanted to get this in place first. And then when we order the trucks, um, we will probably before the year is out, end up doing all the trucks, um, that we will, newer that will come in automatically come. But again, that's part of our branding. There'll probably be nine months of transition. Um, but they're not overly expensive in terms of doing that. Those are the main elements. Um, but the other stuff, the the materials, the marketing communication stuff, as we reprint, we'll do that. And the other element, as, as you mentioned, um, you know, back to the, the bulb, you know, it, 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 it touches a little bit under tradition, so it's not a massive change. So we don't, we don't have to do it instantaneously. So that soft transition should be relatively inexpensive. It's already in the budget.
Um, kind of similar to what Pam is saying. You know, loo- looking at the, the colors, I know you changed it from that lighter teal to this darker, um, color that people had from the last.
Yeah, I think part of the, is the, um, these monitors are not color calibrated. Um, you can even see it, all three of them are a little bit different. Um, the print's probably the better representation of the color. Oh, you don't have print.
No.
So, so that's, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, just the, the question goes back.
But go ahead, yeah.
It goes back to blacks, right? Um, you know, we're, we're black today. I, I like the bold. I like, I like the, the font. I like the boldness of the font. And I still like our old light bulb because it has the image of almost like a, a solar. It's a light bulb with solar, right? You mean the starry, the starry aspect? Yeah, I was going to comment on that, yeah. So, so again, I think this brings us back. All I could think of when I first saw it was like a, a nineteen fifties to, to seventies bottle with the, with the tealer color, you know, so I like, I liked the different color. But again, the light bulb, I think our, my opinion, right, I think our image today represents more of a solar type. Like, and so. The starry, the starry back, backing rather than the, the fishbowl or the, the cap.
Well, the, the challenge with that one, um, is it doesn't, it, it doesn't reproduce at different scales. It be- because of that, we actually spent quite a bit of time, you know, early on in terms of looking at how do we keep that star version, as we called it, the rays, we had a whole bunch of different names and I, you tried dozens of different, um, scenarios associated with it. Um, the challenge is when you go to different sizes, particularly go to mobile, you go to smaller, um, it just becomes a circle. And it looks like it's a jagged circle, so it's pixelated. It doesn't look very good. So that's part of the reason why we got away from the, the more fine, uh, image with those. We, 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 we agree. We like the concept of the idea, um, but we, we, we had to also make it. with those, we, 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 we agree, we like the concept of the idea, um, but we, we, we had to also make it practical in terms of being able to scale and print as well as digital.
How should, how, we often have inspiration of active rate, towards over. But then we talked about, you know, our logo evolved, lasted for thirty years, that's what people are familiar with, and then if you look at other LPs, vocals, they often have those rates, of type of the rate. So ours is actually unique, that's how we got it going off of the company.
Yeah. Go back to your slides, yeah, let's go back to your slides.
Yeah.
Rich.
Well, I just, it, and, and again, I do, I, I do, I do like the, that, that, that image and scale, it's, it's printable, I mean, I've, I've seen it, it's, it's printed. I know in the digital era, we should be able to, be able to reproduce it digitally, um, in some shape or form, right, a- a- any shape or form, right?
Yeah.
And then on the, on the, on the trucks too, right? The truck can just say RMLD. It's a ten, in fact, I, I noticed one of them, the fine print reliable underneath. We, we gotta make sure that there's no small lettering on a, on a truck, right?
There won't be, in fact, we put, in fact, you'll see in some of the backups, you know, the materials that we showed last time, we, we, we tried to mock up what it would look like on a truck.
Just RMLD.
RMLD.
That's it, nothing else.
Yeah, we're, we're doing more RMLD and, again, part of the reason why we're really focusing on RMLD, we, it's not in this slide deck, but the previous one. When you, when you spell out Reading Municipal Light Department, it becomes very long.
Yeah.
And you can't find it, in fact, that was one of the earlier slides we had in the last presentation, it was dead center, but nobody really saw it.
Right.
And so we're with the hundred percent that the RMLD is a tighter, more square, and so unless it be bolder, yeah, so. So we like the tagline, and we like the name Reading Municipal Light Department, and the other element why we've stayed with the light bulb, again, a more, a, a simplified one is light, I mean, we were originally a lighting department, right, so it's still part of our image and part of our name. So that's why we kept the bulb, and the other element, you know, Pam, back to your comment, is that, um, the majority of fixture today still have a, I forgot the number, the T thirty screw-in base, even though there'll be a, a, an LED, um, internal, it'll still be a screw-in base, so that's why we kept that as well. I mean, there's a whole bunch of reasons for it.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, yeah, so RMLD, hundred percent with you. But those, we really, I, we won't walk you through all the detail, but we spent a lot of time as Megan and Melissa mentioned, trying to figure out how to put the rays in there. Um, so that's what we did, and we did, I don't know how many versions of the.
Yeah.
The shading.
A, a, another thought would be, just put a couple of them out there, right? You want buzz on your site, put it out to a vote, on the, on the website.
Yeah, so.
And, and.
Go ahead, you can say it.
I, I just. You, you, you put it out there, it might generate some buzz, there's some designs, okay, do a survey, that's always the survey. Come back, get some, get some input, I, I just, um, that, I think it needs some more input, right, than, I know it's your idea, I'm, I'm, I, I get it, I, I get it, and I, I, I'm just saying. I'm not absorbing it, right, I hate to say it that way, but I, you know, I wanna change it, but I, I want it to be a, a group decision to change it, not.
Good, make a comment.
No, I think, I think it's always good to think that way, and it's definitely stuff that we considered early on. I, I think from where I stand and what I would always recommend as being the client or working with someone in the marketing realm would be go back to your goals and does where we landed, deliver on our goals, and we kept kind of got checking ourselves on this over and over again, and it really does, it really stands out within the field. It really feels strong, it feels like it has legs to it and extends across the industry. Um, looking at other, I, I feel like since we've had this initial exploration over the last couple of months and then presented to you all last meeting, you know, it's, it becomes part of your, so now every truck that I see, every national grid, every unitel, I'm like, ours would look better than that, ours, ours would stand out better than that, or ours isn't as drab as that, and it's really even made us feel even stronger about these choices. Putting it out to things like a vote or a survey can be helpful in some, some stands, but it can also bring you lots of opinions, which opinions are always taken to a fact, are we meeting the goals, and it really should be based on, are we hitting the goals? And if we're not, which one aren't we hitting and how can we shift to go with that?
Dave?
Yeah, just, just to wait on, and I'm sorry, Rich, you had your hand up earlier.
No, well, uh, I, I had a little different vein of questions, so if this is continuing.
Well, it was, it was gonna continue is that, so what I heard last time is that all the work was done within the office, right, the, the management team came up with this.
Well, just the management team, but they're.
But, okay, asking employees.
It was intern, yes.
Okay, so I, I think just.
But not by vote, there was a small group, but keep going.
That, that, okay, whether it's a vote or a survey, but sometimes with this, they go out for A B testing of a focus group, and what are people's reactions when they see one versus the other? And I think what you heard from the Diaz was, this looks retrograde. Now, you're telling me that it's the same as what they sell in Home Depot, and I'm, I'm sure it's true, and the base, I, I know what you're saying, but my first impression was the same as what race had last meeting, this looks like an older throwback technology. And I hear what you're saying, but that was my reaction, and it was the reaction of other people on the Diaz too. So if you were to put this to just a, a focus group that isn't the executive team that came up with it or their reports, how would those people react to it? They might be the same as us, or they may, may not. So that's, I'm a little concerned about that it hasn't gone through that type of process. I'm not proposing you go spend money, I think spending money on this is itself, you know, w- why, why spend a lot of, all the time and even all the time we're doing tonight and last week and all of your time when we're not a competitive business, like people buy electricity from it. So that's all, some of those, uh, life plans, by the way, are, they do run competitive businesses, they have competitive broadband businesses, Ta- Taunton, Shrewsbury, Norwood, and a couple of the others up there are running competitive businesses in, not electricity. So any of those are, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the lack of external input, that it does look retrograde, and that it's a cost. Uh, I don't know, what is it, well, it's, you mentioned twenty thousand, but.
It could, it could be by the time we do everything, it could be ten to twenty thousand, but it's part of an exist.
But plus all the staff time that will continue, and the sign out front that you didn't include in that, right?
I mean, so that's part of the, that's also in the budget as well.
Oh, it is?
I, 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 you know, kind of coming back, um, we actually internally had the same reaction to the light bulb.
Yeah.
Like, we tried to do other things beside the light bulb, and we ultimately came back to the light bulbs. Um, because of, I've been going back to the points that Melissa just brought up, right? It does tie to our heritage, right? We are a light company, that is a recognizable symbol. We tried all sorts, we, we, we tried all sorts of interesting, unusual things, and we came back to that fit, the, that rationale in terms of what we're trying to position ourselves as. Um, the other element is, um, I've done four large-scale brand identities, um, startup companies to one point six billion dollar companies, right? And so no matter what you put out, there're gonna be those groups that says, oh, I don't like it, six months later, oh, it's the best thing I ever saw. So it will grow on you, um, I'm just, I'm telling you from personal experience, I used to be a VP of Marketing, I've done this several times. I did not design this, I, I was part of the team that gave a lot of the feedback to Melissa and Megan in terms of doing it, um. But back to her point, it drives the point, what we're trying to be is a distinctive, right, and it's exactly, you know, Pam, you said at the very beginning, right? You found us instantly when it had that graphic, right? The, the, the previous one, you didn't find us.
Correct.
So we're, we're just, and while we're not competitive, we still, we still appear many, many times in a sheet just like this, and we're this long little thing down the corner, so, um, it is important to have presence, and you're right, we're, you know, we're not necessarily selling to our companies, our, our customers, um, because they know who we are, but there are a lot of other people that we need to make sure that we're prominent. So I, I, and going back to, I mean, we could spend a lot of time working through it, um. I, I, I think, you know, we have done that work for you, and we're basically sharing, here's, here's, here's what we're planning to do. Um, we talked a little about colors, the colors are distinctive, um, black, so there's a, there's a color palette behind it, we'll do a lot of black. Um, but we're trying to do a color that is distinctive, um, the, the gold was our old color, our former color.
So, uh, Rich, no.
Yeah. Charlie, good job.
So, um, I, I think for, especially for our older population, having the light bulb there will help with the rebranding, all of a sudden, if they see, they see a new truck with RMLD, they're used to the Reading Municipal Light, but if they see the light bulb, I think that will help them understand who's out in front of the house, even if it's a bucket dog, but sometimes you may have a, 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 a different type of vehicle. And I, I think that might, you know, help them bridge to the new brand. Having the light bulb, you know, just my opinion.
Just my, my, my question is, um, that, you, you know, maybe this is just sort of part of the training, uh, you know, for new commissioners or whatever. But I know that, that utilities upgrade their logos, you know, and I'm seeing that happen, I guess my question is, why, like, wh- why, wh- why the marketing, wh- why the effort to sort of upgrade? Um, not that it's necessarily a bad thing, I'm, I'm just sort of curious, like, why do utilities do that? Given, I'm sort of thinking about Dave's question, you know, it is a monopoly. You know, where's the point, where, where do you need to stand out, what kinds of neighborhoods do you need to stand out in, that kind of thing? Do you have like the first cut?
Sure, I think from where we stand, um, looking at the current logo, it's been around for around thirty years, um, it was due for a hard look, whether an update or not, it was definitely due for a hard look. Um, and when we started to look at how it was being used, um, you know, we just didn't see it being used effectively, we saw it struggle in small spaces, we saw it struggled online, mobile. We also saw it struggling even just doing, you know, point of purchase type things like apparel or giveaways, et cetera, there's so many that we can't because it's so fine and such an interesting and different font that, it was, you know, interesting difference, but such a like fine font that doesn't really translate well. So at the minimum, we needed to do some updates to the general aesthetic of it. And then when we really dug down deeper, it really didn't represent where we were right now as a company and where we were going. Even though we don't market, there's a sense of pride, both with our employees and our customers, of we are a very forward-thinking local utility, we are always doing more and more for the customers, we're making better and better decisions, we're trying to be modern and bold, even though we don't have shareholders demanding that, that makes sense.
Yeah, Melissa, I look at your slide, so if you wanna get rid of the rays and you wanna get rid of the small font, do that, just keep black and gold. Keep black and gold, keeps the same thing, but, you know, you just.
So we would look at.
Go ahead.
Um, we did look at the black and gold as a color, we do.
This set, black and gold.
Yeah, we do have some struggle with reproduction of the gold, sometimes it looks tan, sometimes it looks kind of washed out, so specifically around things like the trucks and signage, we have lots of back and forth with those folks around trying to match it, um, and it fades very quickly.
And then go, go to the.
And that's looking at.
You'll see on black and gold here.
Yeah.
So it's not distinct, that's part of the other reason why we moved away from the black and gold. They're great colors, but. We wouldn't sound like we do there. Pardon me?
So, Bruno. Yeah, yeah.
That's a sharp gold. Go ahead.
What was the thought process of, I like the idea of, um, reliable power. It's one of the goals that we have here.
No, it hasn't gone away.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the tagline hasn't gone away, right, we, we're not.
I thought you were doing just a RMLD, which is all I know, is taxpayer, I don't know the Reading Municipal, it goes on and on.
Yeah, you know, right.
I just thought RMLD, you know, I gotta pay my bill, I gotta do this, I gotta get the discount, you know? I like the RMLD square, simple, but.
It's not.
It's weird, the taglines.
Yeah, no, we did, yeah, we, we're not getting rid of the tagline, okay, good. Yeah, there we go, yeah. We actually, we, we, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so a- as much as I'm sad we're gonna lose the little star burst that, and, and the connection to solar in addition to the, the light energy as opposed to the light bulb. Um, I, I, looking at all the other things, we are about the only one with a bulb, everyone's got a variation on the outlet, power lines, light, lightning bolts, I mean, which are fine symbols also, I mean, I'm not saying that, that's a bad way to identify what they're doing, but the bulb does, is different among that grouping, so, um, so I can see for the, for the two reasons of, it is a takeoff of what we did before, it'll be recognizable by, by people, oh, yeah, it's the light bulb truck, okay, I, that, that's our local utility and.
Yep.
And I'm good with that, um, and then looking at the lettering of everyone else, i- it's all the block, it, yeah, so, um, Roman is, is probably not gonna be the font going forward, Times Roman is, uh, maybe what I use, but, uh, probably not what the bond people are looking, so the, I, I see the block being, uh, probably more scalable and whatever, so, um, I, I think in terms of cost that we're talking about twenty thousand, that swirls out over time, that's a manageable number, so.
I guess I'm, I'm better.
Shirt, by the way?
That is.
So you're already, you're already.
It's white, it's white, not black or whatever, so you can see it can transform into. I, I, I like the lettering, I think the lettering was, it definitely gotta go, but, but to the bolder font, that, 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 that good on a truck, I guess. It's the color palette. Not, again, fan of black, you know, on, on a, on a white truck. I think you're hearing feedback again. Nope, if the bright term, there's, there's four, five, six people right here, everyone's questioning it, right?
And I, as we do, Bob.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, I've been, I've been rebranded many, many times, right? And I, I've seen good brands and I've seen bad ones, you know, and then look at Verizon, Verizon said Verizon, then it went to a checkmark, it was like, what the hell, it's a checkmark, right, it's terrible. You know, uh, the soccer team that was gonna, no bull balls in this town, they were gonna launch with that, that didn't work, it, right, okay, things stop, it stopped, it doesn't work, but.
The, the Wakefield Track and Field Team was, uh, an interesting choice for, for their t-shirts.
I did not see that, but I, I.
There, there, Wakefield's right there.
But I, again, that. You heard some feedback again. If you, ju- just expand a little bit on the thing, just throw, throw something with the old I, the light icon together with it, but feed it back to everybody here, right, in the, in everybody that's here, right, I, I think it was too small of a group, um, and yeah, I, you, you keep, you keep defending something, I think we're tell, we're giving you feedback, and you, you, you gave us the same thing right back. Um, I, I'm just not, not taking it.
Bob, I think, we don't, so, um, everybody has their expertise, right? And this is marketing, right? It's like asking you guys, how many cylinders should be on the heavy-duty truck?
Okay, that, 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 that's, yes, it's marketing, I'm okay, I'm okay with changing, I'm okay with changing it, it's just, your feedback on the light bulb, maybe we're tweak the light bulb.
So we, we can walk, so it might be helpful, so what you don't have the benefit of um, is walking through the process that we walked through, right? So maybe we try and give you an abbreviated version of that. I, I mean. I.
If we're gonna, well, well, if you put, put it to a vote, I mean, that's the.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
There's no word on this.
Yeah.
Don't change the logo without asking, and, and.
This is why we're not loving it.
Well, I'm, I'm loving it, so that's why I, I wanted to make sure I came to the board, you, you.
Yeah.
You, that's been there for thirty years, don't think.
It has been for thirty years, we're not changing it for the sake of changing.
Change it, but, you know, that, that's why I don't like it, right?
You don't like it because it's different.
That's, I do, I like the font, I like the change of the font, right? That, that was a tweak, right, I, I, I appreciate that, but the color scheme and the light bulb, I, I don't like.
You don't like the light bulb.
I, the light, yes, I don't, I, I apologize for my, my opinion, but I, I don't like it, I like the old one, and, and you know, maybe there's a blend that, that, maybe it needs a tweak, maybe it needs a remodel.
So, I mean, when I, when I say legitimately, again, I'm not trying to argue with you guys.
Yeah.
I, again, this is.
But I don't, I didn't, we didn't want you to change it.
No, but, but hang on. Um, the light bulb, the old light bulb needs to be changed, it isn't, it does not replicate, particularly in small scale. So we can't just go, I say this, it is, it is not the, um, we're making the change because when that was created, it was all print, very, very, very little digital back in nineteen eighty-seven, and the world today is small screen.
It's understood, we all, I think we all got that.
So I don't know what, but you're asking, so what are you asking us to do?
I, can I make a recommendation?
Yeah.
Because this is not something that you're asking us to vote on, I, I don't think it's something that we necessarily, although I appreciate uh, that you're sharing with us, and I also recognize the feedback is important. This is a slow rollout, what I'm gonna recommend is, you know, you're, you proceed with the digital elements of the rollout and figure out a way to ask for customer feedback on the new logo when it starts hitting bills, website, whatever, put it in the newsletter, what do you think of our new logo? Or, you know, hey, we're doing this new logo, we have three color options, please vote. Just something that gives, number one, engages customers perhaps, maybe you'll get a few additional clicks in the newsletter if you're asking people for their feedback. And number two, we can get some data around what people think of it. Ultimately, it's a low-cost thing, I think we all agree, it presents better than what we have currently. We probably don't need to spend a ton of additional time from it, but I do think the feedback should be recognized, and let's, let's come up with a unique way that moves the ball forward on the communication with the customer to also get us feedback. Is that?
No, that's a good, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, so we can move on to the next one. I'll see you review, and thank you, Melissa, for that date.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So now we have a cab motion on policy one.
We're writing the motion, or is he?
Are you presenting about this, the policies?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we can do each one individually, do you want me to, you want to present or? I mean, normally we read the motion first and then I give you a quick descriptions, but that's flexible either way. Why don't you read the motion first, that's typically what we do.
Right. We'll get the RMLD citizens advisory boards recommend that the RMLD board of commissioners approve policy one, community relations revision six, as presented on the recognition of the general manager and the RMLD citizens advisory board.
Second.
Rich, would you mind reading our motion?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, move that the RMLD board of commissioners approve policy one, community relations revision six, as presented on the recognition of the general manager and the RMLD citizens advisory board.
Second.
Discussion, so.
Uh, present, are you presenting?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I'll just give you a quick, we'll do each one individually, so. Um, uh, we have a habit of reviewing, uh, we have roughly thirty-two, um, policies, um, it kind of and our, uh, what we had reviewed a couple of years back, and a couple of years, a couple of months back is to take that list and see which ones are more appropriate for procedures and which ones are, should state policies, and then the policy wants to try and clean them up. So in this particular one, um, we basically went through, um, it's probably the, the biggest thing is part of our community engagement. As you guys know from, uh, further discussions, to really engage legislators and regulators as well in a, in a state of, uh, in the Commonwealth, um, we made some other cleanup, but that's probably the biggest cleanup, um, that we did. The table in front basically walks through each section, what we did for each sections, and then there's a clean version, and then the red line version. Well, so we definitely think the communication policy is important, uh, we think it should be a policy. Um, we have some, um, we kept the key pieces of it and we.
Greg, can I just add a comment here?
Yeah, please.
Then some policies, the cab will not have, because if it's more of an operational issue, we don't want to have an input. But if it's something that involves the community in all four towns, the cab.
Some of them, the cab has, so this, you would.
Because it, it's community input.
Yeah, the others you would.
Yeah, yeah, so, so some we will.
Some feedback, that's, that's fair, yeah.
Um, I have. Please go down with your presentation.
Yes.
Wasn't Melissa, isn't she the community, isn't, isn't this her bailiwick here?
Do you want to ring back?
Man, I thought, I would have thought she'd be.
I, then there's, yeah, she.
She reports to me.
Oh, okay, all right, so, so skipping to the pa, the, the third page of the red lines of the revisions here.
Yeah.
So all this stuff is deleted where you will implement educational and informational programs targeting members of the communities within service territory, including customers, senior citizens, schools, libraries, youth organizations, professional organizations, civic associations. Uh, it, it deletes everything where we're participating in these types of events, and I, I, I wonder why.
Oh, we took out a lot of the specifics because this is a policy document. And all these items are actual activities and strategies, we already have a marketing plan that, that, that we have, so so we brought the policy up level.
These are procedural type things. Okay, well, I mean, it's, it's but there's other things that are specific about joining civic organizations, and that's still in here, so I just don't know. It seems like under the logic you just described, that would also be deleted if it's all just procedures.
Well, the, the, the reason why we left the civic organization, because that is, um, governed by, um, one sixty-four, there's certain things we can and can't, so that's why we left it in the policy.
Okay, I mean, reading it cold, it just seemed like deleting a lot of things that we would want to be doing. You're saying that it doesn't mean we're not, we're diminishing our.
We're, we're actually doubling our efforts, we're, we're, we're hiring another marketing communications.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, so the fact that it's deleted has no, no meaning in terms of just de-emphasizing those activities.
Yep.
And I think that, that's the strategy for the whole policy revision, so not just for this one, but for all policies. Right, I mean, so some things are being removed from a policy.
I mean, okay, uh, the previous page, you're, you're, you're adding execute communications activities across the service territory, but then you're deleting again, like deleting that prepare communications budget and so it seems, again, we're deleting things about.
You're deleting it because that, again, this is us trying to streamline, this is exactly what we did with policy nineteen, we took all the board responsibility to put into one policy. Okay, this budget is part of a budget process, so that's why it didn't belong here. We do, it is part of the budget process.
I assume you have a policy that you need a budget every year that gets approved by.
Well, in fact, it's a policy that you guys, so we have, we have to create one and you guys need to approve it.
Right.
So that's where it's covered, but, yeah, so we tried, we tried to look at these carefully and say, we're, you keep them in one place as opposed to repeating three or four times, go ahead with that.
So with these, with those elements that, that Dave referring to, they go into this, uh, responsibilities B two, the communications plan that is to be developed?
We, well, not to be developed, we have a working communications plan every year. So, so these things.
Develop and update.
Yeah, develop and update, yeah. Yeah, when I, when I, so one of the things, which is communication, it's a, we continually try and do a better job of communication to the customer. And so this is not meant in any way, shape, and form to diminish those efforts. It's just basically, we're trying to clean, we're trying to clean and streamline the policies to keep policies, policies and make procedures, procedures. Vivek, you had a question, did that help?
Yeah, so I had a question on section three A, which talks about charitable contributions.
Yes.
So what are examples of charitable contributions that are supposed to be mentioned in this section?
It, 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 it also, you also had the word excludes, right? It says regarding, you, it, there's some input that when they like excludes must.
So no, but, but let me first, first let you, what, what charitable con- contributions are excluded here? So I just want to be sensitive for that.
I think that's what this is saying is it, that charitable contributions must be excluded from service costs. They cannot pass those to the rate payer.
Correct.
Unless there is a very clear benefit to the rate payer, so it's not saying, at least how I read, read this, it's not saying you don't do charitable contributions. It's just you can't pass them along to the rate payer, it's part of.
Unless they're.
No, so, so what does that mean? So like, who's making the charitable contribution and?
If RMLD makes the charitable contribution, if RMLD makes a contribution to an entity, we have to make sure that that contribution is to the benefit of the rate payers, not just because we like.
So maybe, would, would it help to give an example, like what, what would a recent charitable contribution be?
I can give you, someone gets hurt in the line of duty, and a lot of times they might have a charitable contribution that could go to that person.
For a family supporter.
Yeah, right, that, that's a prime example of something that happens in utility, and you might want to make a significant donation towards that person. That needs to be included somehow in that, in that language, and that there's a benefit to, you know.
If we make that, there would be a benefit, and so what we typically do in situations like that is we don't make that individuals, the individual employees would make that contribution, we wouldn't do that.
So you're saying nothing from the rate, so nothing from the rate payers bucket is going as a charitable contribution.
It could be from below the line, though, it could be out of your rate of return.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you have to make sure that those.
So, yeah, so this is saying it can't be out of anything that you go back into the rate, so it has to be after you've completed your rate of return. If you have any profit, you want to do, make a donation out of a profit to charitable.
That's not what this is saying, Reading Light won't make that donation, this, that's what, that, that's what this thing.
Jason, you're, you're partially correct, um, because those below line pieces actually fund the capital budget, so we're, uh, the legal guidance we've gotten is to be very restrictive in terms of what charitable contributions we make. They have, like, when in error, we won't make the charitable contribution, and we, we want to participate, we'd rather do it in kind services as opposed to cash.
And I, so, so this is specifically saying that we comply with a DPU policy.
Correct.
And then it's, then it explains what the DPU policy is, is that the exact language in the DPU policy? And does it require, does this policy require us to specify what that is?
Version, it just says it's gonna comply with the DPU, and then it says the DPU policy is this. The new version is just basically put what the DPU policy is in the language, it kind of makes it a little bit easier to read. It just doesn't.
The old, the old language is easier, I think, is what we're saying.
The RMLD follows the policies and guidelines of the Department of Public Utilities regarding charitable contributions and gift giving, the DPU policy is as follows, but then it's.
Right.
Yeah, that's a.
So it just puts.
And the snapshot, yeah, we'd rather, so if that policy changes, so one of the things that we've learned also is to have it referred back to the actual policy as opposed to try and paraphrase it.
Yeah, I think, I guess that's my point, is, um, we can change the first sentence, the way that you've changed it, to make it cleaner, but potentially or perhaps referencing the exact language in the policy is better than paraphrasing, which is what you are.
I didn't, I didn't mean to say paraphrase, I wanted, this came from a version. I didn't go back to look, what we basically are trying to do is refer back to the place, the state laws, which is what, which this is, as opposed to having it replicated here, in case it changes, then we have a conflict between our policy and what the laws change. So that's, we've been doing that all along to try and take.
You are intentionally trying to paraphrase so that it.
We're intentionally trying, not to paraphrase, but just we, we, we basically say we're trying to be consistent with DPU policy, that's what we're trying to.
I just would like to take the word excludes out, because policy which regarding charitable, take the word excludes, because again, to the scenario that I talked about. God forbid somebody got hurt here, Reading Light would want to contribute to that person.
I don't think that would make sense in this sentence, the way that it's written.
Oh, excludes, but.
Because it's, it's specifically talking about excluding it from the rate payers.
But everything's rate payer based, Greg just said that if it goes, if it's a profit, does it go back in? It, I just want to make sure that, in that scenario.
Are we sure that from the profit doesn't meet that because the pilot payment comes out of the profit? And it's very clearly stated that that cannot be above the line to be part of your rates. Or, for the, for just the Reading pilot, right? As opposed to, in our case, the twenty-year agreement. If you want to look at, uh, another municipal that maybe only serves one community, that pilot payment can only come out of the, the profit. It can't come above the line at all, and it's voluntary. And as well, yeah, it's voluntary, that's another topic. Well, yeah, but, but if you go to the state law, it's supposed to be voluntary. Supposed to be. Below the line. And it's not supposed to be a taxable item as well, agree completely, Jason. So one could, I mean, a reasonable person could think that if that's your profit, and it's what you've earned, and you're within the eight percent, which is your one sixty-four guidelines, you could potentially contribute to a charity for that money, because it's not part of the cost of service. I understand that you might change, move some of that profit into your construction, your capital. Capital, yeah, which you do. That's all the choice you can make, and it comes out of your profit, that money doesn't have to go there. Well, if it doesn't go there and we do a capital project, then the rate payers need to contribute. At the end of the day, the rate payers are paying the bill completely. And so, again, what, if you look at the, the revised version, right, the non-red line version, RMLD complies with DPU policy, which excludes charitable contributions from service costs unless clear evidence shows the contributions benefit rate payers and are essential to serving them. It, so agreed, that is, that is, um, paraphrased in that section, we deleted the actual text. We can't, we can't delete the word exclude, Bob, because that's what the DPU is telling us, that we weren't, we're we're following the DPU policy, is what this is. We are very careful about, I mean, we, we, we have lots of requests, given our size, we have lots of requests, can you donate to this? Can you make a charitable contribution? It's good, and they're all good things to do, um, but we are very cautious about not doing those, um, like, it's, it's rare when we do them.
What's an example of, of, uh, contribution that is, uh, essential to serving rate payers?
Um, I, I don't have one off the top of my head because they are so rare.
I don't have an essential one, but I do have something we did.
Which one is that?
To this, this is when we, um, got the island down the street, um, next to the McDonald's. Somehow we were able to use, well, I think below the line funds for that, and that kind of.
Puts the landscape.
That you said, just like Jason said.
And that's just the budget for pilot, that's just the budget for profit. Yeah, 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 no, but I mean, you're totally right, but we all know. Probably baked into budgets, even in municipal, when it served in this valley, but realistically, if your pilot payment's voluntary, it's below the line, it's do, it doesn't, may, it may not ne- necessarily benefit your rate payers. Yet you still voluntarily give it, it's almost like a charitable contribution for payment lieu taxes, I mean. Yeah. To the community. Right, but remember, we're, RMLD is a little bit distinctive, and that we are not, that, that our host community is twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent of our total load and total revenue. The majority, we are, we are so different, so we are very cautious in terms of doing this.
So, so, so what Erica said was that payment was made in the past, but going forward, we will not do it.
I.
Right?
We, we can.
I'll ask maybe a different question.
We can get, I had gone back to that example, we, we can get out of the adopted island stuff, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that's our, I don't think that's necessarily what we're saying, but, um, is, with the procedure.
Saying, I thought that's what you're saying, right?
No, that's a benefit, that's probably a marketing, there's some.
Yeah.
My question is, to try, to try to close out the conversation on this one, unless there's some concern, I I assume, can you please tell me if there's a procedure around review and approval of charitable contributions every time they come up to ensure that this policy is followed?
All of those come, whoever, whoever they come through, which is typically through, um, customer service, they end up coming to my desk.
Okay, so the procedure is.
I respect.
Okay.
And, and politely and nicely, et cetera, but, yeah, we just.
Okay, so you're, you are the one who's looking to make sure that it follows this policy every time.
I, I, I do need to point one other thing out, is I noticed that the red line version is not the same. When you accept the red lines, it's not the same as the accepted version, so when I, I've been reading the red line version, like, for example, in one B.
It's a miss.
They're, they're different, the sentence, the strength and positive relationships between RMLD and it serves, and the other one says it's just been edited differently, so I don't know if there's other mistakes. I think we should have stuff to vote on where we have red lines that match what the, what the final is, so I think we should. We've spent too much time on this already.
We will push this to the next month, okay, that's fine.
I mean, I want to.
I'm, my apologies for the, yeah, for the, more air.
All right. I haven't looked to see if there's others.
Yeah, um, um, so we have a policy in communications and community engagement, and in this revision, chapter on community relations is being dropped. Now, I get that we don't want the laundry list here. And I think I heard the are doing community relations programmings, but that is something that's somewhere else.
It's a responsibility of, uh, one of the, several establishments.
So.
It's not the one doing it.
But I, I, I guess I'm missing, I'm guessing, I'm missing why we still can't have a six that says RMLD to develop and implement various educational informative programs targeting members of the community, um, particularly given that it's a policy that's talks about community engagement. And it'd have to be list, the, all of the places that, you know, not limited to, and have this laundry list, we can take that out, but you're gonna create a program, informative program. Um, you, say you've got staff committed to doing it, so I, I don't I guess I'm not sure why we're losing that heading, or we can't have a.
It's not that we're losing the responsibility, but you want to put it back in, we can do it, so we'll go back, we'll double check the.
At a high level, I get at a high level.
I'm good.
Okay, so, so for policy one, we're gonna punt that one to next month, when.
We'll double check the red lines.
The red lines, and we'll add back in the first two lines of the, of that six A.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on this one?
Let me get the first comment, it should be fine.
Okay.
We're calm.
Uh, so we will, what do we do when we just decided to vote, is that it?
Move on.
There work for that, okay, we'll go, move on. Um, all right, policy three. Um.
Should I read it?
Sure, that'd be great, thanks.
All right. I'm into it. Uh, move that the RMLD board of commissioners on the recommendation of the general manager dissolve policy safety committee, and that some components of this policy as presented will be incorporated into RMLD's safety procedures.
So the discussion on this one is we have an active, um, safety program. As those of you that are involved in the industry, right, safety is first and foremost, right? It's, uh, it's ahead of reliability, low cost and non-carbon. Uh, we have a safety program that's in place, it's run by the general line foreman, they meet monthly, um, anytime there's an issue, we review, uh, the issue, what happened, lessons learned, et cetera, so it is actually a procedure. Um, the procedure, we updated the procedure from version zero to version one, that's also in your book. So we basically, the, the concept of removing this from, uh, a policy is that it's really an internal procedure that we follow and we have in place. That's kind of the bottom line, it's, and it's, it's very important.
Go read it.
Any discussion?
Read the motion.
We did read it.
Yeah.
Of second, of seconds.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, it's, yeah.
Any discussion on this one? Any discussion on this one? Hey, ready for the vote? On paper.
Okay.
Hi, okay, five zero. All right, uh, policy ten fraud.
So on policy ten fraud, uh, we had some, we're gonna, I want to request that we hold that to the next meeting.
Okay.
There's some details we want to walk through on that one before we present that to you, um, the boards to consider.
Okay, Greg, one, one comment on that, um, I don't.
Unfraud?
Unfraud, the um, check the old section seven whistleblower protection was stricken out.
It was captured somewhere else.
I was, was it moved, it was moved up and then it won't.
Going reporting the suspicion of.
Okay, damn right.
We got some cleanup to do on that one.
Yep, okay.
Um, okay, policy seventeen tuition reimbursement, you, you want to review this one today?
Yes, please.
Okay, would you like to raise the motion?
Move that the uh RMLD Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the General Manager approve. Policy seventeen tuition reimbursement, revision five as presented. And that some components of this policy will be incorporated into RMLD's tuition reimbursement procedure.
Okay, second?
I'll second that, yep.
Thanks.
Okay, again, with the concept, so we think that this one um. Should stay as a policy, um, we did do some cleanup associated with it. Um, uh, we moved some of the pieces um to procedures. Um, the one probably big change is that we made is uh we removed part-time employees from being eligible. Um, we have, at any given time, there's at least one individual who's, at least one, sometimes two, that are involved in a tuition reimbursement. So it's a program that's actually utilized, um, and we're a big supporter of uh encouraging uh. Uh, advanced education, whether it's bachelors or uh, or some cybersecurity, whatever it might be.
How many part-time employees have taken advantage of the tuition reimbursement in the past? None, so that's why you're.
Part-time employee.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's just, as we looked at it, we're like.
Is it something where in the future, if you had a part-time employee, would they petition to have it, or is it a hard no?
I think it's a hard no, again, we're looking at, so we're a big believer in it, um, but, um, you know, we're making an investment. Our, our view is it's a full-time employee that's going to be here for a while, there's no. Yeah, we just, we just thought that part-time didn't belong.
Great, one quick question, is there a limit on how much from a budget point of view that you're willing to spend per employee or across the organization?
It, it has to be approved ahead of time, um, but we, again, we tend not to put limit, the, the, the numbers are not significant because people usually do one course um at a time. Um, so we really haven't put any cap on it. Um, and we, it hasn't been on our resource, and we, we're really. We're, we're big, we're a strong proponent of continuing education of one form or another.
There are certain requirements that they have to meet, it has to be fully credited, that they have, their grade has to be about certain level. So some people may not finish, but they will take some courses, that, that's our experience so far.
But one quick on the responsibilities. I know. We pushed down the approval lower into the company, right, I, I'm just saying it shouldn't. Not necessarily go to you as the GM, maybe to the Director of HR. We, you know, I'll, I'll approve someone's, I'll agree with their, what they're taking, and then it comes to me, I, I approve it, maybe you take yourself out of that. Get enough things on your plate, I, I don't know how often it occurs where it becomes necessary, but. I, I don't, I don't see it requiring GM approval to take a class, I think either the Director of the, the um. HR or.
Yeah, she does, so she, she processes all of it, again, I've got to sign on all, like you guys do too, I have to sign on everything anyways. Yeah, good, good, thank you, it's helpful, but it's not. In the, in the grand scheme of things, I find this, like, I still sign the rebate letters um that go out, um, it just. It's, it's part of, it's a fun part of the job.
Yep.
Here's a check for thirty five hundred dollars, you know, it has a cover letter from RMLD.
Yep. We don't want you not to have fun, Greg.
Yeah, it's, it's a positive element of the job, like, it brings a smile to people's faces.
The, the only, the only thing I would say, I get, I get that there haven't been part-time employees that have taken us up on that program. In the event, like, we don't speak to it at all, it seems in this policy now, it's full-time employees and it excludes interns and. Get that, we don't make any comment, maybe it's just part-time employees will be considered on a like ad hoc basis or something, I. I would hate to like have a part-time employee who's a great employee who wants to further their education and maybe become a full-time employee. Not have that opportunity here, um, just because they don't speak to, we don't speak to it at all, or it's a hard no.
Yeah, I mean, I, it, it's not going to move the needle one way or the other, if you want to put part-time back in, we can put part-time back in, I, I. I'm, I'm, I'm flexible on that one.
Again, I'm just, my feedback is, yeah, it would be great to have some mechanism where if that case happens and it's something that somebody wants to do. They have a mechanism for requesting that and it's not in a.
Prorated?
Immediate hard no.
Could you prorate it to their level of?
I don't even think, like, I, I don't even know that I would.
I think so.
Make that statement right now, I just give them a pass.
Yeah, and we'll give them a pass, I think that's, that's, I like that, that's actually a good way to do it, Pam, good suggestion. Okay.
Most of your part-time people would only stay six months anyways, and not here for like three years, are they?
We have some that are here, depending upon where they are in their stage of life, that, that part-time works for them. Um, we have an individual in the purchasing team that is in that category, and will probably be here for another five years, who's been here for three? Yeah. Yes, but they're, they're, they're infrequent, I mean, they're, they're not, it's not common, we tend, we don't. We don't have a lot of part-time positions in general, like, because we, we have to create the part-time position, we're going to have one, and we tend not to, um. But it's, again.
Oh, because part-time has to fill in for part-time, it just.
Yeah, it's just, it's terrible. It, it can be.
Great fits for part-time and some employees are fantastic and part-time works, you want to hang on to them, and I think that's a point around.
This individual is wonderful.
Yeah, we don't, you know, it, I'm sure there are many who are, and, you know, we would want all of them to have the opportunity to further other education that's related to RMLD if they want that.
We are massive supporters of education. Any other stuff?
Okay, so it would be, uh, we would have to add as amended or in terms of adding back the path for. To the policy.
As amended. We'll create a, a B four, a uh.
Okay.
Three B four.
There a further discussion on?
Pass for part-time.
Does anybody have a problem with that? Okay, sorry, I'm finding not the right language to use.
I have a problem with that.
Problem with that?
Okay. Exactly, I'll get that or.
Good question.
You have a problem with that?
Yeah, okay.
See, we're looking at.
Uh, all, uh, all in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, okay, best standards, policy twenty three.
Yeah, I don't want to monopolize anything here, but.
This was good.
Your reading is good.
Just wait till we get to procurement requests.
That's really.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the General Manager dissolve Policy Twenty Three dress standards. And that some components of this policy as presented will be incorporated into RMLD's clothing procedure.
Clothing procedures.
What's clothing?
That's exactly what we did, we, we created, it's in there, we created a, a clothing procedure, um, we updated it to reflect. Um, administrative people who are inside the building as well as those that need protective gear as well, um, again, we.
Sorry, is the, is the document we're looking at that says RMLD policy number twenty three dress standards, the procedure?
Oh, I'm so sorry, okay, um.
Everything in this.
Can you throw it up on the screen?
So you're saying you're getting, getting rid of this?
We're removing the, we're, we're removing the policy.
Yeah.
Um, and we updated the clothing procedure. OP fifteen R one. Got a number. And I'm sure there's.
Put that in a T-shirt.
I'll catch up with you at nine.
Oh no, I'm not allowed to wear a shirt with a stain on it.
Oh, my shirt says stains on, I'd be naked.
That's not, that's not authorized to do that. Nor safe in many cases. Yeah.
I got a transfer this time.
Oh, you got a transfer though, yeah. I mean, it basically, there's acceptable attire, items to avoid, grooming standards, exceptions, additional requirements for fieldwork. Um. And then specific things for online workers, hearing protection, fall protection, arc flash protection, respiratory, high visibility specialized tools, so. Two and a half pages of, of, of procedures, it's, it's a procedure, I mean, it's sure, yeah.
I assume, I, I've never read, read this one before, I assume this passes legal muster in terms of. You're able to tell people they, they can't wear. Uh, shorts below a certain part of their thigh or whatever, you're, you're actually allowed to do that under the law, and as long as you're saying yes, then, yeah, fine.
Yeah, we might, we might.
Okay. Okay, so, um. Did, did we, sorry, did we read this one?
Yep, you did.
We did, okay, uh, all in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. Um, vehicle use.
Uh, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the General Manager dissolve Policy Thirty One vehicle use. And that some components of this policy as presented will be incorporated into RMLD's vehicle use procedure.
Same idea.
Yep, second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, he's excellent idea, um, so we actually updated, we do have a, uh, we had an existing vehicle use procedure. Um, and so, and I, I will let you know that. I, because I, I have it here on the procedure, but um, it does have a provision relative to aftermarket products, including stamps.
Including stickers?
Including stickers.
Okay. Good.
So.
Is it, it's a procedure, not a policy, it's the fundamental.
Right. Which in terms of the enforcement.
Equally severe.
Okay.
I mean, that depends upon the situation, but.
Yeah. What uh elements did you not move to the procedure?
I, uh. Well, I think.
We just did this policy pretty recently.
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm just reacting to the some elements got moved to in the.
Yeah.
In the, um, some components of this policy in the um, motion that we just read.
I think they're all, um.
So if we were to.
It's comprehensive.
Okay.
It's literally, it's um, it's six pages plus a, plus a.
If we can amend to say, and that all components of this policy. As presented will be incorporated into the vehicle use procedure, that would be accurate.
Um. And the reason I'm pausing is on the element of if it's covered someplace else, it might not be in this, but say in, in an operating procedure. As opposed to the vehicle use operating procedure. I'm okay with that amendment, you follow what I'm saying?
So there's di- different procedures?
We have lots of, we have lots of procedures.
Well, regarding vehicle use?
No, there's one vehicle use procedure, but again, um, I haven't done, I, I have looked at this a month ago. Um, which to be honest, and so I'm just trying to remember which ones, if there's anything that didn't make it, I'm pretty sure all of this stuff made it, back to Erica's comment. Um, but if they didn't make it into this one, they would have made it somewhere else, they're all useful pieces. So I'm okay with that amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can confirm for the review that we did internally that all statements from the previous policy are in the current.
Okay, okay, so no need to say the amendment, you can add any one, but doesn't.
Yeah, like, let's just amend it, just.
Totally fine.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. And. Sorry. Oh, Brad, when, sorry, we, we passed through that, so that's why that was the only other one.
We pushed two of them to next one.
Yep, and just, I was expecting another cab one, so, okay. Okay, procurement requests.
All right, uh, this is for the substation transformer assembly project, move that IFB. Twenty twenty five zero one for Wilmington Substation Transformer Assembly Project. Be awarded to Transfluid Services Inc. for a hundred and sixty four thousand eight hundred dollars pursuant to MGL C thirty thirty nine M. As the lowest responsible and eligible bidder, on the recommendation of the General Manager.
For the second? Bob, thanks.
So for discussion, um, as you guys know, we took delivery last week of the first of two transformers for the new substation, um, Station Six. The second one is due in uh at the end of this week theoretically, uh, if not early next week. Um, this particular bid is for the assembly, they came um, broken down for lack of a better expression, so they can ship. Um, there's a lot of pieces of equipment that hang off them, um, the bids were sent out to twenty six companies, we had five respondents, four responsive. Um, this particular company that we're awarding to Transfluid Services, um, they're based in Houston, um, they've got twenty five years of experience in terms of. Transformer and substation equipment across North America, they met technical requirements, um. Uh, uh, we contacted their references, they all had profit, positive references to work with, and so our recommendation is to go with Transfluid, yes, go ahead, Zach.
Transformer, the prices were all over the place, right? So, what, so how, how, in terms of what we budgeted, where did this come out in terms of?
Um, we know, uh, the capital budget for this item was three hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we put it right, so we've, we've, as a practice, we put it right on the, on the bid request, um. Uh, you know, as you'll see, um, so there were two bids that were relatively speaking close to each other, um, and then the other three were higher, well, one of them was way high, but that's it. But the other two were higher, the, the last one didn't qualify anyways. Um, so, I mean, in, in terms of bids, the one sixty four to two thirty seven, while it seems like a lot, it's not a massive range for a project like this.
Can you, um, just from, uh, again, my own edification, can you outline just briefly, high level, how you do these bids? Uh, you said you sent them out to a certain number of companies, so this isn't, in this case, this is not an open bid, this is, you have a list of vendors that.
Oh, we do post it on, and so it's all posted on the website, but we also proactively send it out to people that we know would be, well, that we think would be interested.
Okay, and then, and then when bidders come back, there's a, there's a due date. What's your review sort of process?
So for most projects like this, we, before we sent the bid out, we, we create a technical spec, we create a, the technical spec is an evaluation team that will actually, that creates the spec and then they'll go back. And look at it after the fact.
And they score it against those specs.
They scored against the specs, um, we typically look at um capabilities first and then price second, typically, it's not always, but typically, if it's, if it's excavation services. There are excavation services, so there's not really a technical evaluation, but you'll see that in just a moment. Um, so that's basically, we're, we're basically approving an hourly rate. But in this particular case, yeah, we go through a, there's a outbound process and a posting process and an evaluation that comes back.
Okay, yeah, that's great, was it surprising that only? Four, four came back from, is that what you said?
Yes.
Out of the twenty five that you sent out?
Correct.
And no open submissions, unsolicited submissions?
I, uh, I don't, I, I don't know that for certain, to be honest, um, but we. You know, we will typically average two to five responses to any individual bid we do, um. We're, um, um, you know, we're a larger MLP, but we're not an IOU, um. But, yeah, the other element about uh MLPs is, um, we, we pay promptly and we're on credit risk. Um, and we do have, particularly now, there's a lot of uh recurring business. So you'll see in a few moments that sometimes the existing incumbent will, because we have to depend upon the length of the contract, typically contracts are no more than three years, sometimes a one year. With two uh opportunities for automatic renewal as well, depending upon how good we find them to be.
Mm-hmm, okay, that's helpful, thank you, good.
Good discussion. Hi, ready for the vote? All those in favor, five oh, motion carries. And the next one?
Uh, IFB twenty twenty five oh seven, zero seven, Electric Utility Excavation Services, so this says. Uh, move that the IFB twenty twenty five zero seven for electric, electrical utility excavation services for hourly rates. Be awarded to Tim Zanelli Excavating LLC pursuant to MGL C thirty thirty nine M. As the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the General Manager. Contract is for a one-year term with the option for RMLD to renew the contract for a maximum of two one-year renewal terms.
Have a second? Thanks, Dave.
Great, so discussion, um, these, this is, we do this um, on a regular basis. These are for um excavation services as needed, so we're actually approving an hourly, that's the way the bid was structured. Um, we've, we've done a whole, over, we do this on a regular basis, um, this particular template um seems to work well for us. Um, we've, we've done a whole, over the, we do this on a regular basis. Um, this particular template um, seems to work well for us. Um, and for the people that bid, um, it's not only uh, regular utility excavation, um, but emergency excavation services as well. They would also cover, for example, if um, our equipment is not able to set a pole or whatever, so we will depend upon what it is. Um, uh, but it's basically excavation services. Um, the uh, uh. It was sent out to twenty three companies, eight responded, um, seven were responsive. Um, and the lowest ended up being um, Tim Zanelli Excavating Services. Um, they're, they've been servicing us for a couple of years now. They do a particularly good job. They're very responsive. And in this case, we're literally, it's bid on the lowest, it's an excavation services and they're responsive. So if they, for some reason, um, stop being responsive to us, then we will end the contract at the end of the first year, but they've been very helpful for us.
Additional discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, one more. Three charge point electric vehicle DC fast chargers.
Move that RFQ twenty twenty five eleven for three charge point electric vehicle DC fast chargers. Be awarded to Vol Trek LLC in the amount of one hundred and six thousand five hundred pursuant to MGL. C thirty B twenty two as the lowest responsible vendor on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second, yeah, I'll see, I'm sorry.
No discussion on this one?
Is it, so that's, um, is that thirty three grand each or a hundred and six grand each?
The uh, total for all three.
That seems like a good price. It seems like they used to be a lot more expensive than that.
One was.
One was a hundred thousand, right?
But there's a difference.
Um, yeah, this one has a slightly lower power, but we're gonna pair them.
Okay.
So, uh, so it might still get up to like over a hundred kilowatt.
So this is, these are DC fast chargers, but they're sixty KW. Uh, level twos are somewhere between typically ten to twenty KWs. Um, but there's, um, so these are less expensive.
Level twos are more like six thousand watts.
Level two is uh, seven, seven point.
Yeah, so we're seven, yeah.
Up to twelve.
And, and some of the, like the ABB ones, twenty, I'm pretty sure that. Okay, so, so we'll check the specs, but yeah, less than ten are level twos. Anyways, these are sixty. Um, the ABB ones, the two previous ones that we purchased were um, up to a hundred and seventy five KW, so faster.
Oh yeah, the sixty seems like plenty.
It, we, we agree and we thought the price was good and again, we're very, we're, we're, we're not rushing to install a whole bunch of them. But we agree that um, at the price point, um, it was, it's, so we planned to install the first one literally um, in front. So we'd have a DC fast as well as the L twos that we have out front as well. And then the other two, we have a couple sites that we're looking at for that as well.
What, what's the business model on these?
Uh, so the business model is a, is a combination of um, uh, so we're, we'll reset. So we put together a DC fast rate last. July, June, July, year ago. So we would own, we, in this particular case, we would own the asset. It's not too expensive. Um, we. Uh, we don't mind if other people own the asset instead of us. Uh, but.
But, but these assets we own, there's no grants on these or?
No grants on these.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no grants.
Because I know there was said, there's some Navy grants which are at risk, so that's why.
Hmm, yeah, well, we also, we had applied for, there was, uh, last year, there was a five point two, five point three million dollar grant. That we were in the running for, but it all went to Boston. It, it actually got focused in the. Boston.
And you collect revenue on, on it too.
Yeah.
What do you charge in per kilowatt hour for?
For, right now, it's twenty cents, but we are going to change that.
To higher. That's good, it should be higher.
Yeah, it should. It was very long.
But I think initially the idea is just really, uh, it's used as an educational tool, like, right? To or to motivate people to buy EVs that we don't have, but don't need to buy a charger to become charging properly chargers. But after this procurement, we're gonna review like, you know, how we're gonna invest in new EV chargers.
When uh, are we anticipating these to get delivered?
Uh, I think they're in stock, actually.
Yeah, you're in stock, okay.
Um, so this, in essence, we'd have to spare them.
Uh, we, we plan to deploy all three of them.
All three, okay.
If we have to.
But i- i- in, in the case that one does get wrecked, we, we, we don't have, we, we don't.
We have a spare, we, we have the equivalent of a sparrow, though we'll put it in the service.
Okay.
The one we probably would, we will, we anticipate putting two together. At a, at a retail establishment, there's two that we're looking at specifically. If one of those got hit or whatever, we would probably take the one out here and move it over there until we got that fixed.
Yep.
Most likely. But we'll see, I mean, we're gonna go back to the use. We go through phases of utilization on the ones that are out front here. Um, they go through phases where they're all busy, the utilization's high and then it slows down. Um, so we, again, as Megan mentioned, we're learning. In terms of, of uh, installation and where, but.
And, and is this, so, so you mentioned you're, you own these assets.
Yep.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm sure you've explored other models, right?
Somebody else owning them.
Yeah, somebody else, but that doesn't pencil out as well.
Yeah, we actually work with municipalities, like, that we have, we serve four towns. So we tried, we convinced them to invest, and they were like, oh, you guys.
So that was the other option is having the towns own them.
For public chargers, that would be the, yeah, best.
And then is there also a third party where the third party owns it?
Yeah, we, we have people coming to, coming to us proposing fast chargers as well.
Yeah, but this was the best from a revenue generation standpoint.
But um, this particular, because the price point's relatively low, the payback period is shorter. And we can actually put one out in front and, and learn. Again, we're trying to learn more and more from. We have, we have an ABB one in library, which is part of the grant program. We have another ABB unit back here, which has no revenue tied to it because we use it to charge our trucks. We have two service trucks. Um, and then these two would be two, because they're relatively inexpensive, the payback period would be quicker.
What is the payback?
Yeah, what, what are you talking about?
We haven't, we haven't set the rates yet.
Oh, it's that much? To, to, to break even is five to ten years.
Um, right, so because of the utilization rate. Yeah, that's why I said after this procurement, we'll have to look at, we, we currently have over thirty charging stations. Uh, so we're looking at all of them, the performance of them, and some of them are about to kind of expire, like end of life. You know, in a few, in a few years, ten to fifteen years only.
Any other question?
Ready for vote? All those in favor? Okay, five zero. Okay, uh, cab, BSC and cab provision statement, clean heat, large building, attachment five.
Okay, so, um. Ray and I happen to be part of a, a webinar, and we've actually become more familiar with the Clean Heat Program. Uh, the IRD team has been doing research on the Clean Heat Program. The other MLPs have taken a much stronger stance um, against. CHP, large building reporting, advanced clean trucks. Um. Our view, um, and again, we, we'd like this to be a letter from you guys, so it'd have to be your view as well. But um, we believe that the MLP business model um, is a, uh, is a superior business model. Um, in terms of serving electricity into um, our, our communities. The um, what the Clean Heat standard in particularly, and then there, there are four different items here. I will let you know that the Advanced Clean Truck Regulation, uh, which we've talked about before, um, as of Monday. That got pushed off another year, so it's not, it won't take effect until January first, twenty twenty seven. I think we should still leave it in there. Um, but we can walk through each one of these, but basically, the Clean Heat Standard is meant to encourage the adoption of heat pumps. And we are, we've had a heat pump program in place now for five years. We have over a thousand systems installed. We're averaging somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and seventy heat pumps. Um, as uh, uh, Megan walked you through, uh, meeting before last, we've, we've upped the incentives. Uh, we've placed the um, zero interloan program. So we, we think heat pumps are a good thing for our customers. Um, we think it's a good thing for us. Um, but we think it's also linked to when customers, because heat pump systems um, are not insignificant capital investments. And so the timing to do that, for we, we think for our customers would be when they're replacing their furnace. Or they're replacing their central air conditioners, or they're replacing their window air conditioners. Um. The standard, the Clean Heat Standard that's proposed right now by um, the Commonwealth. Um, it would not be onerous to us. Um, the, I think, current calculations are, it, it would start in twenty twenty six, it would be about forty units, forty systems. Um, uh, full house systems, hundred percent systems. Um, we are expected to be just over fifty in twenty twenty six is our forecast. So we don't expect to have a penalty. We think we can meet the standard. Um, our response is really, um, it's going to create another additional compliance obligations for us. But more importantly, uh, for the first time, it will actually, if for some reason, again. The decision to do a heat pump is on our customer's decision, it's not our decision. And so there is a significant penalty if um, our customers choose not to hit the minimum number. And the number is six thousand dollars per installation, increasing to ten thousand dollars by twenty thirty. So it increases a thousand dollars a year. Um, that money, unlike um, other ACP, alternative compliant payments that stay inside the territory. Um, these monies would actually go to the state, and they have yet to quite define exactly what they would use the money. So while we don't think it would be a problem for us, um. We agree with the other MLPs that having money taken out of our, our territory. Um, if the customers decide not to adopt heat pumps as fast as we would like them to, or the state would like them to, it's probably not a good thing for RMLD. So that's one piece of it. Hey, go ahead, question.
So what is, what is the objective of this standard then? Is it to encourage you to, you, instead of paying a penalty, use that as an additional incentive to customers? To convert, like what, what's the, what's the driver to get the customers?
So it's a, it's a, uh, if this is effective, it's a mandate. So no matter what you do, utilities, you have to meet this mandate. If you don't, you get a penalty.
It's a stick coming from the state.
Yeah, so.
It's a stick.
It's a stick on national grid, it's hitting national grid.
It's really.
All, all four towns, all four towns get gas from national grid, and that's about fifty percent of the heating, right? So fifty percent of the heating is national grid, and the rest is oil.
So it's forcing National Grid to make the decision to change buildings to electrification, to electric.
It's trying to drive all rest, so this is residential and, and commercial buildings, but it's in, it's intended to. In the context of fulfilling the um, greenhouse gas goal of being at zero by twenty fifty. And the projection of the adoption of heat pumps right now is below what the state thinks is required to hit that. This is meant to be a larger stick to drive that adoption. Now, the adoption is not, the, the penalty is not put on the customers, the penalty is put on the energy providers. The oil companies, the gas companies, and now the electric companies. Um, so it's, it's meant, it's a. Um, again, we think, we think heat pumps are great, and we have been for a long, long time. We just, this, this mechanism for forcing us to do it has a couple of things in it. One is, it's got a penalty that moves, that could move dollars outside of our territory. Um. That's, that's probably, that's, that's a, a big piece of it, and the other element is, um, it's basically moving, which for the first time. Well, it's these three items, for the first time, trying to bundle MLPs into the same bucket as the IOUs. MLPs as a group are about fifteen percent of Massachusetts load, so while there's forty one of us, we're relatively small. Um, we think we do a lot of innovative stuff, we're, uh, you know, our, our rates are lower, our reliability is higher, and our compliance is also higher. Um, so we're, we're suggesting that we. Our, our letter is not quite as aggressive as some of the other ones. We're basically saying, look, our business model works. We don't need the push. Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, and, and to follow up with Greg, um, there is for Rich's edification. Um, there is an organization which is just, has been amorphous for a little while. We're trying to get firmer in our, in our structure, called the Municipal Light Commissioners Association, and it's basically designed for us. Uh, and, and the reason for that creation is to do a couple of things. Number one, you and me into recently, and Pam, so just a few months more recently than that, well, longer than that. I'm into this position with very little instruction on how to actually perform it. So. And being able to talk and get information, Greg is very kind in giving us instruction about that. But of the five of us, if any, more than two of us talk, then we're in violation of open meeting laws. So how do you learn when you have restrictions on communication? So the idea of the MLCA is to say, let's get everyone together. And let's talk about policy items at a high level, not specific to any one organization. So the commissioners can be engaged, learn about topics, so when you come back to this setting, you have knowledge about subject matter. And, and then can speak to it without having to violate open meeting laws and learn from each other. And so, uh, this is great, this, the Clean Heat Standard was one we just had a meeting on fairly recently. And one of the challenges that some organizations have, and I don't, don't think we're, we're quite that adversary, adversarial here is.
Not meant to be.
Some, some GMs have gone off and said, we're municipalite, you don't regulate us, we're exempt under the law, just leave us alone, go away. If you want to harass IOUs, then go do it. Well. The, we set policy, and we advise the GM, and GM implements that policy by, you know, how he manages the organization. So when we talk about Clean Heat Standards, the MLCA said, well. We don't necessarily agree we want to take the position that go to hell, we don't want to do this. Because in fact, in many ways, we really want to, we do. And in many ways, we already engage the organization, uh, the communities by working with the schools, the senior center. To do green building programs.
And the incentive structure.
And, and the incentive structure. So, so in many ways, you know, we're ahead of the curve in terms of doing it. And, and a go away, we're exempt, leave us alone, isn't the voice that we want to have, either to our GMs. Or to the regulatory body. So how do we? Talk about that, how do we learn about it? So the MLCA is one avenue for doing that, and I invite you to. Talk more about it and I'll get your contact information, it'll be on the mailings. Um, but that's a long way, long intro to, we did have a discussion about this. And, and I think the message is, yes, we're for heat pumps. No, this program won't incentivize us to do more because we're already doing a lot. Some of the things that we are doing, we're not getting credit for under this program. And so rather than have a framework. Which would take money away from our ability to continue to promote that.
Inside of our.
Inside of our territory by having tax-free, uh, interest-free programs or, or allotments. Let's, let's just continue to do that, and we support the goal of getting to carbon. Um, but this isn't the framework, um, administratively that we would want to follow. Um, although we agree with the basic goal. So I think that's the way a lot of others have framed it. I think this does, I, I'm not sure about the other three. I would want to, personally, I'd want to read this more than, than I have.
You can read it, yeah, so, um.
But, but nevertheless, that's.
That's the, you, you have exactly right.
That, that's, that's what I, um.
The, the other one is the, the large building energy reporting, and that gets into a legal issue. We want to try and avoid being an illegal issue. Um, if they, if the, if the state wants to collect. If the customers um, want to uh, give us permission to share the information, we would. So we're, again, we're not, we're not trying to be counter, but um, the, the state needs to get permission from um, the building owners, not us. And we use an example of, we have a semiconductor customer, and energy data um, is a proxy for production. And energy can be a competitive piece of information, and we are very, like, we, we, we don't share. We don't, I mean, we put that in the category of privacy. If they allow us, like, if we were to share anything with somebody who's doing uh, an energy audit or whatever on that building. We get their permission to release that data. So that's where that second large building energy reporting thing comes from. The truck one we talked about, I think we should still leave that in there because it will, it'll become an issue. We've got a one-year reprieve, uh, we'll talk about it at the next meeting, or either the May or June.
Five more trucks now.
That's, and, and that's what we're doing, and so, so we got a reprieve, but the trucks have to get delivered. But we think we should leave that. But we think we should leave that in the letter because just to have addition while they, while we have another year reprieves, it's going to come up again. Um, so that's why that one's in there. Um, we thought about deleting it, but we don't think we should.
No.
Well, my suggestion for you guys would be to take a look at this, um, send your edits back. Just to me and I copied anybody else. I will um, assemble a final version with, with Melissa um, and Megan. And, and I'd like to try and get something out by the end of the month if we can. Yes.
So I, I think, you know, the, the big.
Look at the tone. You go ahead. I'm sorry.
The big issue here is the A C P, right? The A C P is the real issue right there.
Well, that, right.
So for that, rather than looking at it as a problem.
Say what A C P is for.
Oh.
Okay, so the A C P.
Turning to compliance.
There's no, there's no, if we're over, we can't sell, there's no provision to, there's no provision for us to get it any.
Right, right. No, I know, I, I recognize that. But then let's state it and saying, this is not working for us. Flip it, make it attractive for us. As it is, we're doing enough. Make it work for us. And there is like, there is value here, like, I'm, I'm just saying, there is value. Someone else is capturing that value. And you know, that value is going from our community. So is there a way for us to capture?
Under the current proposal.
Exactly.
Right.
So, so I'm just saying, if you take it to your municipal group and you say, if you capture the value and figure a way to split it, just split it with us. So if there is, if we are ahead of the curve, put that value.
I, I, if, if I may, Vivek, so that's actually an interesting idea. We, and I think we can make the edit on that, um, as we talked about earlier today, but not to split. Because again, this is right.
So it doesn't matter.
Yeah, just, I, I just want to make sure that I capture the, just everybody's on the same page, that, that those, um. That the benefit stays within our rate payer base, right? It doesn't, it doesn't go to the state. It stays within our M L D's territory.
But by, by, by splitting, it means split it with the homeowner or something like that. So you give someone an incentive to do that.
Okay, that's part of the incentive problem. All I'm stating is, is our intention is not to split it with the state.
No, not with the state, but say, if, 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 it's like, I'm, I'm just looking from a business point of view, I want to incent a home, incent a home buyer. And I just, yeah.
Yeah, I, but I think the, when you go back, why this is all coming. The rate of adoption, right? Like every new building is saying, hey, go green, you know, I, I don't want any gas or oil going in. That's X, all retrofits, okay? Yet this, they want the big utilities to now go in and replace your furnace at their dime. With. Utility, I didn't say every utility. You're going to go around and take out your furnace, but I call it the thirty five, forty five, whatever it is, put it in. You eat it and everybody pays for it in your rate bill and that's how we're going to do it, right? That, that's the driver of the.
That's the driver.
That's the driver, right? That's. Unfathomable, but that's what the state is doing right now. Rather than wait for it to happen in a, a natural attrition. You know, they're forcing everybody's hand in equally. They're not going to exempt a municipality from it.
And that's.
And, and that's, I think.
And that's why we're trying to.
You could bankrupt municipal electric companies. When you say seventy thousand customers, I got twenty thousand dwellings, if that's, if that took thirty to fifty thousand dollars per, we go bankrupt. But that's what you say.
It, it has massive upward pressure on, on cost because it's. So we, again, that's part of the problem with the system is that it's penalizing us as the electric utility. Like I said, it's nicely, like, we're the good guys in this, like, we're trying to make it happen.
But, but I.
But at a rate that makes sense for the customers.
But, but again, if it says you, you have to do this over this conversion, why am I paying for somebody else's heat pump to get installed? That, that's the, uh, that's what's missing.
Somebody else.
What is the conversion timetable that they're talking about?
They could say.
Start twenty twenty six.
What, twenty, well, twenty thirty.
Certain percentage that you, you cheer by twenty six and they have another one at thirty and.
Up to twenty fifty.
Yeah, so in fairness, Richard, to be full, you know, right now, we are above that minimum.
Yeah, but that's what you say here.
Yeah, so, so when, again, we're not, but if for some reason that adoption slows down, back to Bob's point, now we're taking. It's not, it's not, you know, a slap on the hand of five hundred dollars, it's six thousand going to ten thousand dollars. I mean, that's per, per installation. Right, per, per, per installation. Right, but, but gap is installation, yeah, yeah, per gap, exactly, per installation, that would not happen.
Right.
Right, and it's, and those, those are not trivial numbers. Now, again. Because of all the work we've done, we're out of the curve. So we're not, like, we're not shaking in our boots. But. We, we're trying not to be dropped in, again, Bob, exactly, we're trying not to get dropped into the.
You're going to be putting a forty thousand dollar bill potentially on top of, on top of customer. And, and I'm, I'm, that's probably a higher number, but if you're already adopted, but you're, if you're already adopted, you're going to pay for somebody else who isn't. That's not fair.
Well, that's another.
That's a whole.
There's, there's a bunch of, there's a, that's a, yeah, there's another set of pieces. Anyways, go ahead.
There's also a whole set of customers out there that are going to refuse this, right? And if you get to that set that's refusing to do it and you can't make them do it no matter what, now you're going to be penalized.
Exactly.
For people that absolutely refuse to put a heat pump in.
Mm-hmm, right.
That doesn't make sense to me, like. When we go to an A M I and a radio meter, people opted out because they didn't want to have the R F. Well, for whatever reason they come up with, they didn't want. The meter, A M I meter, and there's people today that hold out, just don't have the electrical mechanical, they have to go out and read and they won't pay extra for it. What happens when you get to, uh, people that don't want heat pumps, refuse to go to it. And you get penalized for it. That's not right.
What is, what is the goal, tar, what are the target levels?
Yeah, so, uh, starting twenty twenty six, so it'd be forty eight full electrification. And then. Forty eight installations. And then.
What percentage of?
Up to twenty fifty.
Twenty four thousand, we have twenty four thousand five hundred.
Three thousand installations, that's required.
Per year.
Not, not per year, total of the next twenty five years.
Twelve percent of the customers by twenty fifty?
It's.
That's about.
So they have a ranging scale that starts at just under fifty.
It's not like a hundred percent.
Ten percent, ten percent.
Ten percent by twenty fifty.
I think forty five, I, I have to go back and look at it because we've done a lot of. I think it's a hundred percent by forty five, um, but it's not a trivial number. And again, our, our intention back to Bob's comment is we're trying not to get, like, we can. There will be, as Jason mentioned, some that, uh, when we get to twenty thirty five or twenty forty, that just hate, open my dead body, am I going to, to be electric, right? Um, so between now and.
Ninety percent of our customers could say that is, is what I'm hearing.
Ninety eight percent will say that. Right now, as, as Vivek mentioned, again, and this is work that, remember the. Reading Climate Action Committee, right? We did those two different surveys, fifty percent are natural gas, just in ready, we'll take that from the whole group and forty eight percent are oil. The balance are either propane or electric. Right, so you're right, it's a, it's a massive transition now, you know.
I guess, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the goals by twenty fifty as a massive. No, like, maybe I'm getting the numbers.
No, I, well, so based on the standard. And based on the current trend of adoption, so I, I cannot predict whether the current trend will continue for twenty five years. I think we can meet the standard. But that's all, that all depends on customers actually are willing to convert.
Totally get it, but, but just the end state goal is that you have approximately ten or to twelve percent of your.
Yeah.
Single family homes in your entire territory at the end of twenty fifty.
Yep. Yes, right here.
Yeah, that doesn't sound.
Understand what it is that we're arguing.
And also, yeah, very men.
I totally understand the point around the stick versus the carrot.
Fairly fine, this is not about installations, their standard is about metric tons of emissions avoided. So the actual standard is on metric tons.
Right.
And then for that purpose, partial installation also counts for credit, costs for half the credit.
Are, 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 just for the sake of the, this discussion and the context of it, you, you're orienting us to this. Letter right now, and I mean, at least for me, I, I would like to learn a lot more about the clean heat standard. See you next week.
Okay.
No, we would all like to, and I don't think that's a, a one-on-one conversation. I think that should be a board, a conversation with, for the board. Done, like, either you send us the materials.
Yeah, we can.
Like, whatever, whatever works best.
I mean, we can, it's, it's, sure, it's online, right?
So we just do our own research. We'll send you, we'll send you some links and then, and then I'll be, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll create the Q and A session without.
The framework is on the, uh.
Yeah, because I, I'd like to, but, yeah, what we're saying.
Yeah, I think the piece. Right. Uh, the piece that I was, in addition to the links of what is the, what is the standard proposed? What is the impact, the projected impact to us, to our M L D? So that we understand where are we today, what is it telling us we would need to be at and how feasible is that?
So the impact is we probably will, again, under our current adoption rate and we're going to, and we're, again. We are proactively promoting, we'll do more webinars, we'll, you know, we increase the incentives. So we think we'll always be above the requirement. So we don't expect to have to pay a compliance payment to the state. However, we're right, as we get into the analysis right now, twenty thirty to twenty thirty five or twenty twenty eight, twenty thirty five, we're right. We're just matching it. Like, there's not a lot of margin of error. We're not below it, but we're not.
So great. I spent quite a lot of time looking into some of the standard.
Please go ahead.
So that's useful to look at what's on the web. But I think the missing piece for this conversation is, well, like you said, Pam, what is the implication for R M L D? So, so.
We have the.
If you can share that with us because for us to take a decision because. Clearly, this is something that the B O C was asked to respond and it's a, was a question whether the cab would also take a position. And since we actually represent, you know, majority of the shareholders, I mean, the, the peers.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I think it makes sense for the cab to also participate.
Thank you.
But I think we really need that information as to.
We'll put a package together and we'll get it to you probably Monday and then we'll be available, we'll figure out a mechanism to. Either as a group or individual to pay upon what we send to you, what kind of questions do you have?
Because if you look at the, if you look on the website, it talks about a six thousand dollar payment. Or installation, there's also a price per ton of carbon, hundred and ninety dollars.
Yeah.
Per ton of carbon, right? So. To translate that into what it means for R M L D, I think if you can tell us, this is what we think. This is the logic for why we think we need this, then we can make an informed decision for our towns also.
Well, we'll, we'll take one and just clean heat, right? It's also the large building reporting that.
This letter is, yeah.
Is it all part of one regulation or is it separate?
There's different regulations, man. Yeah, there's four different pieces.
And, and it wasn't the piece I like about the way you've written out the large building, you've provided an alternative. And the others have no alternative recommendation. I think it would be useful for us to understand what, you know, again, we all agree that this is the right.
Yeah, I think, we'll, we'll try and create an alternative.
Yeah, the alternative, I think Vivek mentioned is like, right now, for example, I think the, in the first few years, based on our projection, right? We're going to be above the standard and we can bank those credits, but there's no dollar value to those credits.
There's some way, if we can get some credit for it, you know, in.
In dollars.
One of the things, I don't know if you remember, we had a conversation here about energy efficiency. And like, when I was thinking of that discussion, I was thinking about, and Dave, you and I should discuss, right? So it was about reducing greenhouse gases. So if you're converting. A home from gas to electricity. And you're saying we were only focused on the energy efficiency part of the electricity piece, we're missing the whole story, right? So we want to help that. And so to help that, and we are exceeding the limit, we should get some credit. So I'm, I'm just saying, there is value here.
It's like the recs, right? The recs, what, there wasn't a rec market when they started, but now there is.
It's a new market, is what they're developing, new market. Form of business and we're going to start selling clean energy credits and that's where it's going to go to it here, right? And, and, and.
To what end?
Be a new market here in Massachusetts, only in Massachusetts, we're going to be trading this, buying this, complete. Exactly what it is.
Okay, Charlie.
How, how do we capture who does a conversion? So say customer A just calls a heat pump company. And they have a Mitsubishi unit installed. How does Redding Light know that they're not?
They, they have to kind of request the U, U I N, which is a utility, uh, the radiation number. Because they, it's an electrical work that they need to get a book from it and they get inspection.
Town permit process or something like that.
Right, exactly.
Then you're not going to know.
You just have an H V A C company come in, change it over and away they go. And Redding Light doesn't know.
Yeah, it's very possible.
Well, you get, you get incentive to it. You get, you get a rebate, a tonnage back, right? Right, you get a rebate, so it's what you're wild.
Someone that just didn't know, didn't care and just paid for it.
Right.
The contractor probably would know.
What you had mentioned fraud, there's been a lot of cases of mass save.
Yep.
Unbelievable fraud. So you, we, it's something that is very important to always keep an, keep an eye on. Um, multiple. Could like people go and do some serious jail time for multi-million dollar fraud against mass save. So it's, it's, it's just because of, just to your point, someone says, oh, I did it, oh, I did it ten times, boom, boom, boom.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, one quick thing about this clean heat standard and Vivek's point about there is value there to maintain within. Territory and within the district is there's a lot of different ways that you probably come up with that. So I, I guess I, I would be. Cautious about putting something that's super specific. Uh, in the language, because I think there's probably different ways to, to think about, to capture that value. Um, so anyway, just, uh, you know, it might be worth kind of thinking about those different ways.
We'll keep it open, but create an alternative.
Right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I know you're trying to wrap up.
Yep.
Um, to our dear friends at the cab, um, you can be part of the M L C A. Uh, you guys are unique in the industry. There aren't many utilities that have you guys. So, um, if you guys want to connect and be a part of that discussion where. Utility policy and, and stuff is discussed. Um, I'll, I'll give you a, a link or, or share your email and you, you, you're not excluded from that. You're, you're more than welcome to participate in those discussions.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got some follow-ups there, um. Good enough, anyway, okay, great. Can I update?
Speak, yes, so, um, I will be relatively quick, um. We talked about one of the two, um, so big picture. Um, team members, right? New system engineer started, we talked very, very briefly about this three weeks ago. Um, one of the two I R D positions is the marketing communications position. Um, I mentioned before, we are putting a lot more emphasis on right legislative and regulatory, um, and community, right? That's the community engagement. Um, the ribbon cutting that we were planning to do at the end of this month, we're going to move to the thirteenth so that we can get more of the legislative. Participants, uh, regular legislative participants in particular. Um, speaking of, uh, the M C L A, uh, that joint storage, um. I'm sorry, uh, there's a couple of different grants there, um, but we did, uh, I'll get down to the, uh, good, at the very last, I'm sorry. The joint, um, O C E D grant application, that was a project that we are, um. Uh, participating in with, uh, Burbank, California, which is a public power utility and Alson, which is a novel battery storage. Um, it's a long duration. They are still, um, early. Uh, in terms of development, so we would be one of the pilot installations if this grant gets applied, uh, applied for. Um, it's a different chemistry, it's not lithium ion. Anyway, just to let you guys know that that concept of innovation. We're actually putting out money where our mouth is on that one. Exploration, um, harvest, I mentioned that one in there specifically, um, but that was, uh, two sessions ago with the M C L A. I might try and attend these as well. This was basically a group that has a, uh, thermal storage program for, um. Uh, peak management, um, so we've actually, uh. Had a follow-up meeting with the company, we'll do a little exploration internally with the I R D team in terms of how does the economics work and is it something? That's actually commercially available products, um, so we'll see if that makes sense for us. It looks, it's actually rather intriguing. Um, M B U was, uh, again, one of the things that, uh, Vivek, we appreciate, uh, um. Uh, invitations for us to meet new people, um, Vivek's been pretty good, it turned on a regular basis. M B U is another one, it's a demand response for small commercial customers. They have a whole bunch of different pieces, but that's probably the area, if there's anything, it'll be in the small commercial, I'm not as optimistic, they'll be a good match, but it's still good for us to explore. Uh, and then the Connected Grid Alliance, um, it's basically M L P innovation with small local companies, uh, more than startups. Software and hardware, um, it's another pr- program that Jean Jacques is, um, spearheading. Um, and we are participating with them as well, uh, as potentially a, a testbed for, uh, some of these smaller companies to actually test their products. Um, again, not, not development, not research level, but, uh, initial application type stuff. So the point being is we continue to look for. So the point being is we continue to look for, you know, I'll give you more on this, Rich, but we, um, we, we as a M L P are somewhat distinctive in that we are a, a microcosm of the greater Boston electrical load. Our load is forty percent residential, thirty percent commercial, thirty percent industrial. Um, we've got a wider range, so we're just a nice little microcosm. Um, we're big enough to have resources, but small enough to be nimble to try things. So, so that continues to move on. Projects, um, over the next couple of months, we'll do more detailed projects, but, uh, Substation Six, I gave you a quick update, right? Transformers are delivered, excavations in process. Um, our, uh, um, our intention is to have the transformers placed by, uh, June. Um, ultimately, we're still on, on, you know, to be fully transferred by twenty twenty-seven, but we are partially at the schedule of National Grid. We are connecting to National Grid Transmission Line is particular case. Um, on the A M I replacement program, um, as we mentioned before, right? We, uh, executed the contract, uh, last month, uh, we issued the P O immediately thereafter. Um, the, uh, we basically are looking at two phases, so this summer and the fall is the first, um, phase one meter deployment. We'll actually do that with our team to learn. Um, some of the software platforms, we ended up doing a, uh, um, a cloud-based solution, Pam, um, so that's actually stood up. And then in twenty twenty, um, six will be the, the rest of the deployment and we'll actually subcontract the, the, uh, installation of those, the balance thirty-two, thirty-one thousand meters, uh, because our goal is to do it fairly quickly and one fell through. Um, that's, uh, being well managed right now. Um, this is the, uh, Linfield Center, um, Water District. Um, so, uh, this is the, our, we probably expect this to be a, probably a fall twenty twenty-seven event. Um, part of it is due to, um, the Article ninety-seven status of, um, the area that we want to put the, the, uh, project in. And it's also linked to the fact that the pump station, um, is, um, somewhat delayed in terms of the installation. So the pump station will get installed first and then we'll put our solar array and potentially a battery next to it. Go ahead, Vivek.
What's the capacity of this project, solar and battery?
Uh, the solar is about two point, two to two and a half megawatts, um, and the battery system would be a five megawatt system. The other element, um, I'm gonna try and do this on a regular basis, uh, again, responding to, uh, goals. So we tried to lay out some mechanism to say where are we? Uh, we had some deliverables in the first quarter. Um, those deliverables in the first quarter we've completed. Um, some of those we started, so basically, you know, the, like, um, the, the yellow or, or, uh, amber color is, uh, is paused, um, some starts, some stop. Um, the green are in process and then the blues are completed. So you'll see progress on a regular basis and all these, and we expect to get them done this year. Yeah, go ahead, Vivek.
Pause on the last line, long duration, storage pause.
Yeah, so that's, um, I'll probably come back with you guys in terms of a little more detail analysis associated with. This is the Form Battery Project, the one that we were looking to do, um. Uh, the reason for this pause is just the economics tied to it. I think we've been pretty clear saying that we're willing to, this is a situation where it's a long-duration battery project. Um, we think that the economics are favorable for R M L D to invest up to five million. Um, but we need to, we need another ten million to come from somebody else. So it's a thirty-five million dollar project. There's a ten million dollar hole. And part of the legislative regulatory discussions are seeing that the state has ten million dollars that they want to invest in our project, uh, I say invest, but in our project. Um, it's, it also benefits a local, uh, company, Form Energy. I don't know how this will play out, um, but we did do as much in March on it. We had a lot of activity last year in January, Feb. Um, but I just said pause, it's not pause forever. Uh, we have to make a decision on it. We'll probably come back to you with some recommendations in May.
Same kind of rationale for line T. That one was also paused after two green months and then a yellow.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
City economics.
Well, no, that's different. That's just, um, basically the, the timing of, uh, having space available to do these projects.
Oh, okay.
Well, when we get to executive session, I'll walk you through some of the reasons why that's paused.
Okay.
Um, it's not a lack of interest. It's just, um, where do we put it?
Yeah, because one of the issues with Form is that it requires a lot of space.
Yeah.
Right? So, so it impacts, I would imagine, the land implications also. So it's, it's not just a, it's not just a project economics, but it also ties into land and, yeah.
Storage is, uh, it's a quirky.
It's a necessary quirky business. That system is particularly, you know, it requires a lot.
And heavy.
Just a quick question, you probably told this before, but Jay, where you audited customer communications and recommended enhancements? Is that, is there a document or a summary of that?
Yep.
Okay, I know you probably presented on it and I'm just blanking on it, but if you could send that, I just kind of want to look at it.
Sure.
Or send it to the group probably. Is that all right?
It's in last.
It's in the board package, so we'll resend the board package.
Okay.
And I'll point out.
All right, if it's in the board package, then my bad. So it was last month?
Yep.
Okay, so that, that answer on Jay was in last month's board package. Okay, thanks.
So.
Thank you.
Just one quick, reminding questions of things that are like Q four, twenty-five and show as paused, does that really just mean not yet started?
Correct. Well, in the case of complete customer satisfaction survey age, yeah, it hasn't been started yet.
Okay, just, they want to think about just changing the color of that. Or, or, yeah, the, the logo teal.
Um, wait, we're not paused, we're not pausing, we, we, we started.
We did now, but we didn't back.
Oh, back.
Trying to feel like, yellow bad, red bad, green good. Blank, we didn't start it yet and that's okay, we're on track, we'll start it when we.
I'll choose a different color than white, but okay. White says, forgot about it, but I'm with you. I hear the idea.
Take whatever. Take whatever.
Okay, good. Any other questions on the update?
Yeah, my, my going back to T again, um, I, I, I'm sure that's, um, paused in part because we're looking for land and that hasn't quite gotten settled yet. But my, my, uh, response is we don't need land, we need area. And if, uh, if, uh, we get past the, uh, recal and kill them, there's like three or four parking lots that become.
Yes. We're actually looking to a grant opportunity with the state.
And, and I, I'm not advocating we do anything until after the vote, because if the town votes it down, then that's a whole different deal.
We, we still want to get, um, solar.
I, I know, I, I totally know that. Uh, and, and if, if the town votes to, to issue the bonds, um, then that means those projects are go and that means we can, we can play.
Yeah, we like it. Do, do, is it a priority to encourage private solar construction using our rebates? Yes, we have the rebates in place and, um, we have the rebates in place.
Yeah, hundred dollars per kilowatt.
Yeah, and, and we might go back and revisit that again, but at the end of the day, um, we're we're looking at solar in terms of our power supply portfolio. It doesn't really move the needle in reality.
No, no, I know, I know, of course, yeah, it doesn't.
I think I mentioned that before, we are working to look at some commercial rooftops to try to work with them.
Yeah.
We need to work through some legal, uh, uh, issues too, like.
Meaning that R M L D would own it.
Like if we leave, we leave, if we lease their rooftop, what does that mean? Like warranty and, and whether we are allowed to do it as a.
It's in place right now.
Okay, and are we letting people use that to the maximum?
The which one?
That, that, that use the six hundred dollars and, and build their own and get.
We, we aren't, we aren't chasing people away and we're encouraging them, but at the end of the day, David, as, as you know, right? Because our rates are low, the payback period is long.
For them, yeah, right.
Yeah, so, again, our view is the, the maximum opportunity would be for R M L D owned assets as opposed to, but we, we have incentives in place, we encourage it, um, and they're gonna adopt this fact, it's back to the heat pump issue, which is if it makes sense, you'll do it. If it doesn't, they won't.
I had a quick question about that, uh, A M I replacements.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I love, you know, A M I metering, uh, I'm just curious, is there a document or something that sort of explains how you're gonna use the data? Or like what, what's the?
There are some, yeah, there's.
Data. Um, like in other words, why the A M I is, how, how do you, yeah, how are you gonna? Yeah, what's the programming for the A M?
So that's an ongoing discussion because we're running ongoing, so we're actually replacing an existing A M I, A M R system. So it's not, so, um.
Okay, so you've already had.
We've got experience right now and we're not using it to its fullest extent. Um, one of the things that I'll update you on is, is there's a big emphasis in terms of data analytics. Um, more emphasis, part of the, the, uh, re-experimentation with T O U. So we're doing a lot of things. Um, we also anticipate using that data from an operational perspective as well in terms of, uh, improving their reliability. So there's a whole bunch of different elements. Um, but we are, we are still early in that process. Any input you have in terms of things we should think about, warmly welcome. Um, but it's, it's, it is a replacement program, not a, oh, hey, this A M I is.
Okay, okay, so it's not, right.
Just completed the meter data management system. So we already have our hourly data, we have maybe ninety, I would say ninety percent because some of the meters are too old or in a location where you can't get the signal. But so we are developing hourly load shapes already for groups of, like different groups of customers.
Including industrial customers, yeah, so, okay, all right, so there's more. There's more, there's a lot of information that you, you guys are already sort of in the works of planning through how those data can be used. Everything from load shaving, peak shaving.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah, one of the, one of the goals is the cost of service and they design.
Yep, so lots, lots there as well. Great. Shall we adjourn?
Uh, can we just do scheduling really quickly?
Oh, okay.
So, May twenty-ninth is the next one and I don't think we have anything else scheduled, uh, it seems, so June. Um, personally, I would, I would be looking to the last week in June.
Twenty-sixth.
The twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth. Twenty.
Twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. Here's like, is it Wednesday or Thursday? Pardon me?
O, o, open either. Pretty fifth of the Thursday.
Pretty fifth would be my preference.
Wednesday.
Twenty-fifth's good.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
Sorry, we check.
Keep going.
Um, then in July, I guess looking at the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Great.
Very good, okay, and then August. Uh, we have NEPA, for those who may be attending, the seventh, seventeenth to the twentieth.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
As a placeholder, yeah. What about the, the earlier one, the, uh?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, then we, we have, uh, two, that would be three weeks in between. Meeting.
We just had three weeks.
Okay.
We can, sometimes, sometimes we've not done an August meeting, right?
We definitely don't do, with the past two years, we've done, we've just had so much going on. So while we placeholder on the thirteenth.
Okay.
And then, uh, if we decide in July not to have it, we can decide not to have it, but it's good to, it's better to delete it from the calendar than.
So, so, so what are the dates? June twenty-fifth, July twenty-third and August thirteenth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thirteen.
Okay.
Okay, um, and then we have two new elected members that need to be newly elected, re-elected, that need to be assigned to A P and payroll. Um, do you have any preference, either of you? We can share more about what this is, Rich, it's just, uh, offline.
It's just, just be them.
Emails.
I'll, I'll be, I'm.
Rich is green.
All right.
Oh, I'm still sorry.
Or sorry, Dave, do you want to be green only because this gives us time to train Rich to do the June word?
Yeah, so you just take a rubber stamp and you put it in the ink and then you go. That's what you do.
Actually, don't even do that, you just respond to an email. Or actually, yeah, you click on a.
Do you want to be green?
Sure.
All right, Dave, I'm putting, I'm putting a live for me, so Dave's.
Okay, so, so then I'm orange.
You're orange.
So that means that I am doing these things here.
In June.
Orange, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we'll walk you through the process.
It's just, yeah, review and.
Yeah.
Questions and signature. Um, okay, so, uh, we would be adjourning to executive session. Um, would the cab like to?
Yeah, Charlie, can you read them? Though.
Um, yep. You're right.
Move that the R M L D Citizens Advisory Board go into executive session pursuant to M G L C one six, law section forty-seven D, exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances under purpose number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property relative to property in Wilmington and Reading and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second, second.
Okay, I'm in favor.
All right. Rich.
Uh, move, move that the R M L D Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts G L C one sixty-four, section forty-seven D, exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances under purpose number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property relative to property in Wilmington and Reading under purpose number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and purpose number one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Okay, okay, all those in favor? Fine, okay. We are adjourned to executive session. Thank you.
I don't, I don't know, it's all. It's too far ahead, yeah, I, I don't, I, I, I'm going away. Yeah.
That were in my, uh, little.
Recording stopped.
Oh, we're here. Yes, please. Yeah.